Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Planning Commission for May 14, 2019, 7:04 PM here in the City Council chambers. We've kind of changed the way we do things just a little bit. So we will begin with a moment of silent prayer or meditation, and that will be immediately followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which I shall lead tonight. So let us rise and remain standing for the pledge. Thank you. I'm going to silence first.
(inaudible) to the eye of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you all very much. Next, we'll have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Holtz.
Here.
Mr. Hing.
Here.
Mr. Kennedy.
Here.
Mr. Haques.
Here.
Chairman Redholtz.
Here. Next is approval of minutes for our regular meeting of April 23, 2019. Any commissioners have any changes they wish to make on that? Hearing none, those minutes are approved as presented. Next, we have oral communications. This is the time when any member of the public may speak to the commission on any matter within the scope of duties assigned of the commission relating to non-agendized or consent calendar items. Other matters included on the agenda may be addressed when that item is under consideration. For all oral communications, the chairperson may impose reasonable limitations on public comments to assure an orderly and timely meeting. The Ralph Ham Brown Act limits the planning commission and staff's ability to respond to public comments at this meeting, thus your comments may be agendized for a future meeting. I have no oral communication cards on non-agendized. Has anyone wished to speak to the commission on an item not agendized? Nope? Only on agenda, right? Okay. Then we're good. Thank you. All right. We have no public hearings tonight. We have three non-hearing, well, four, but three study sessions, and we have a request by one of the commissioners to go out of order a little bit. So we are going to do item number three first, which is the study session on the Code Amendment number 18-04 regarding alcohol sales at service stations. We're going to do that one first. And if you wish to be heard on that item or any other item, there are pink cards at the lectern. If you would fill those out and give them to staff, you will be called at the proper time. So are we ready?
We're ready.
For the staff report, Mr. Director, who will be presenting that? I think I know.
Our planning manager, Joanne Burns, will be presenting that report.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Chair, members of the Planning Commission, and also members of the public. This study session for the code amendment, let me go ahead, oh, let me go first, go over the, a little bit of the background regarding behind the code amendment. The request was initially received from Mr. Mosin Karimi, which is, who is the owner of the Chevron Extra Mile Station at 246 North Citrus Avenue here in West Covina. He submitted a request asking the city consider a code amendment in order for his, the convenience store within his service station to be able to sell alcohol, which is specifically beer and wine. On August 28, 2018, the Planning Commission initiated a code amendment. On February 26, 2019, the Planning Commission held its first study session on the item. During the study session, staff presented the Planning Commission with a list of gasoline service stations within the city and a list of businesses within the city with active off-sale alcohol licenses. In addition, staff provided the Planning Commission with a list of potential standards discussed by the Planning Commission when this very item was, was discussed in 2010, when a similar code amendment was being considered. The Planning Commission directed staff to reach out to the police department and the fire department for their input and issue, bring back information on surrounding city standards regarding alcohol sales in service stations, and prepare a map identifying all the service stations and stores with off-sale alcohol licenses within the city. In addition, letters, emails received by staff prior to the meeting. In addition to the letters and emails were served, received by staff during the meeting at this particular study session, 11 members of the public spoke with concerns regarding public safety and the over-concentration of retailers selling alcohol within the city. Four members of the public, including Mr. Mosin, spoke in support of the code amendments, citing customer convenience and the need to stay competitive with gasoline service stations in surrounding cities. The study session was originally, the study session was originally scheduled for April 23, 2019. At that time, the study session was continued because the commission felt that it would be, it would serve best if the entire commission was present in order to hear the study session Okay. Here is, on the projector is a map of all the service stations that is identified on the map with a star in the business, in all the existing businesses in the city with off-site retail alcohol licenses. As you can see, there are, there are a number of retailers in the city that serve off-site alcohol sales, and most of the service stations in the city is, is around, is concentrated along near the 10 freeway. One of the items that the police department included in their memorandum to the Planning Commission and to staff is a list of cities that, a list of surrounding cities that, that have off, that allow alcohol sales within gas stations, and these cities are the city of Azusa, Balden Park, Covina, El Monte, Glendora, Laverne, Walnut, and West Covina. Basically, in the city of Azusa, the city itself has 46 retailers that sell alcohol, and six of those are gasoline stations. Balden Park, 48, two of those are gasoline stations. Covina, 56 are gasoline stations. El Monte, 75, two are gasoline stations. Glendora, 27, one is a gasoline station. Laverne, 21, three is a gasoline station. And Walnut, 13, and two is a gasoline station. The city also conducted a survey of surrounding cities, which included Covina, Balden Park, La Puente, Sandimas, and Walnut. And we, we searched to see if, one, they, these cities allow alcohol sales within service stations, the process, and if they have performance standards that the city can possibly consider adopting. All cities surveyed allow alcohol sales within service stations, and all cities surveyed require a conditional use permit process in order for service stations or any other type of alcohol used to be allowed to sell alcohol. And most cities do not have performance standards, with the exception of the city of La Puente. They have performance standards, but it's not specific to service, service stations or gas stations. It's, their performance standards are, are standards in general that they apply to stores that are less than 5,000 square feet. So if this, if a store is less than 5,000 square feet and they want to sell alcohol, they must be 800 feet from another, at least 800 feet from another use, and they also have to be at least 800 feet from a sensitive receptor. The sensitive receptor that they, what a sensitive receptor is basically churches, And I'm going to go ahead and follow, follow up with a list of potential standards that the commission can consider adopting if the commission decides to go forward with the code amendment. So basically, these, these potential standards were discussed in the 2010, planning, during a 2010 Planning Commission, when the Planning Commission was, was considering a similar code amendment. Sales of alcoholic beverages at service stations require a conditional use permit. Advertisement of beer and wine shall not be permitted at motor fuel islands. Single container sales of multi-pack alcoholic beverages are prohibited. Identification card reader is required to determine authenticity of the identification that displays the age of the individual. Installation of a comprehensive imaging system, which views the record of, of the entirety of the premise and property. No payphone shall be permitted on the exterior of the premise. No beer and wine shall be displayed within five feet of the cash register or front door. No beer and wine shall be sold or displayed in an ice tub. Signage in both English and Spanish shall be posted in the parking lot and the exterior of the building, notifying the persons that alcohol shall not be consumed on the premises. No coin-operated video games or entertainment machines. Signs shall be prominently posted in English and Spanish stating that California state law prohibits beer and wine, prohibits sale of beer and wine to persons under the age of 21. A convenience store should be a minimum of 2,500 square feet in floor area. The maximum of 10% of the retail area shall be allowed to display and sell, to sell, to display and sell alcohol. The floor area devoted to off-sale and display of alcohol shall be limited to 10% of the retail area, including refrigerated coolers. Limit the percentage of sales of beer and wine in association with convenience markets, to the convenience market portion of the gasoline station. The site shall comply with all current development standards for service stations set forth in the municipal code. With this, staff recommends that the Planning Commission review the information in the staff report and attachments, and provide appropriate direction to staff regarding the code amendment. And prior to ending staff presentation, staff did receive a letter from Mr. Michael, an email from Mr. Michael Tui regarding alcohol sales in, in service stations that the, that staff will distribute to the Planning Commission, or has distributed to the Planning Commission in front of the dais. And, and also, in addition to this, staff received a phone, a phone call from Mr. Forbes Wilkins, asking if we can read his April 22nd email to Jeff, to Mr. Jeff Anderson, for the record. Would the, would the commission like me to, would the chair like me to read his email right now or later on during?
What is the pleasure of the commission?
Yeah, Commissioner Haques. Is reading an email or a letter submitted to the commission a sort of typical practice that the commission allows?
It's entirely to the, up to the discretion of, of the chair, really.
Yes.
What? Oh. Commissioner Holtz.
If you're going to read that letter, are you going to read the rest of them that we got today? Or, I don't know if it's today, but we're given to the staff, you're going to have a stack of them here.
No, that, we're only saying that, that he made a special request. We didn't get any other special requests to read letters. So that's, that's the point.
Okay.
And also, for the record, the city received emails and letters from other interested parties that, that were, that were submitted in, that were previously submitted prior to the study session, in, prior to the previous study session, and the, and staff did include that packet, the email packet, and is distributed to the Planning Commission.
In my view, I think reading only one and not the others gives it more weight. And to me, all of the emails or any correspondence we receive should be treated equally. So I, for one, am not comfortable in reading a, one person's email, requested or not. I think it gives it, I think it gives it more weight. They all should have the equal amount of weight that the commission should assign to them. So if we have it in, it's already in our record. It's part of our documents we have to review, and I, you know, with me, I'm fine with that. I, I don't see a reason to read it aloud.
I concur with that as well.
You concur? Okay.
Me too.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And also, for the record, staff did send out a public, a public notice to the study session through the e-notification. So people who are interested or, or are part of the interested party that signed up for the e-notification were notified of this meeting.
Correct. And just a side note, that particular individual was not here for the April 23, and he, again, is not here tonight. So, you know, we have his comments on file.
Yeah, I wholeheartedly disagree with that. I think if anybody sends something in and wants to be heard, they should be heard as a resident of the city. Thank you.
Okay. Let's, thank you. Let's, is the staff report? Where are we at on that? Are we done, or?
Yes.
Okay.
I just want to make one, one comment, because it's something I hadn't even ever noticed on the cards before. What Joanne just said was, we have an e-notification system. We're not doing mailers, and the card may mislead you to think we're doing mailers. So if you want to be notified, you're notified by email. You can sign up on the city's website, and some of the people here are getting the emails that way, so that, it's an easy way to do it. It works very well. You get the same information you just get via email. It's easier for the city. It's easier for the people. They don't have to look, go through their mail. So just wanted to make sure that everyone was clear on that. If you have any questions about that, you can talk to us. You can call us tomorrow or try to get us after the meeting.
To, to add to what Jeff had mentioned, that in the, at the, after the study session of February 26, 2019, there were several people who, who filled up a, filled out a speaker card that left their phone number, so I contacted them and asked them individually if they wanted to be a part of the e-notification, and I helped them sign up to that. So that's something extra that we've done as part of this process.
Okay. Very good. Anyone have any questions of staff after hearing the staff report before we go to the public?
Yes.
Commissioner Haques, please.
Yes, I have a question about the list of potential standards that could be included in the, in the code amendment, and I understand that those were drawn up when it was previously discussed in 2010. And there appears to be some of the proposed standards that are specific to gas stations and others that could have a more generic or a general application and could, could just as well be applied to any off-sale alcoholic sale establishment. So I was wondering, you know, which, you know, what, where have we seen, where, where have, if any of these standards already apply to off-sale alcohol establishments in, in the city already?
I don't believe any of them do. I could be wrong. There could be some overlap, but we, keep in mind that just because you have a conditional use permit process or an administrative use from a permit process doesn't mean there are standards in the code. Many times, you have the conditional use permit, and then the standards are, work, staff comes up with standards, bring them to the Planning Commission, they add standards. That's how they, so if, if we go to the presentation she showed, other cities require CUP, I don't, I'm pretty sure none of them had standards in the code, right? Yeah, none, none of them have standards in the code. That doesn't mean they don't put standards on their conditional use permit resolutions of approval, but they don't have standards in the code. So this maybe is a discussion we probably maybe want to have afterwards, because it is an important discussion. These are not necessarily coming from staff. I want to make sure that's clear, too. It sounds like you knew that, Commissioner Haques, but these, these were volunteered by previous applicants and maybe some discussion at commission level. But we can talk about options once we, I think, I think I would do that afterwards, so.
Yeah. That is, you know, really, the purpose of the, of the study session is to, is to hammer out and craft the, the standards. So, I mean, then, you know, we can do whatever we agree upon. That's what it'll be, you know, as we go forward. Okay. We're going to open it up for public comment, you know, kind of like to hear what the public would like to see included as part of the standards and conditions as we go down this path. So anyway, we'll go to the public comment, and Mr. Sykes, you're first, Fred. I know you'd like to be first.
I'm Frederick Sykes, 41-year resident of West Covina, retired deputy sheriff, and former mayor of this city. You know, I'm back again tonight to ask this commission to keep in place. The city of West Covina has this law that most places around here don't have it. Covina, everybody all around, Walnut, City of Industry, La Puente, the unincorporated areas of LA County, you can drive out of here and you can get, go to get your gas, you can get alcohol everywhere around us. But West Covina, for, for a long time, we have said, we are a cut above. Our forefathers were thinking about their children, about their families, about why they moved here. And that's one of the tools that they put in place to protect our standard of living, our quality of life, the value of our properties, to make the businesses feel comfortable. Because they knew when they come to West Covina, if they were allowed to open their businesses here, they felt special. They felt special. Why? Because that's how we presented ourselves. In this eastern San Gabe Valley, West Covina has always been special. You know, I was deputy sheriff and, and, and I grew up, you know, Watts, Willbrook, and Compton, worked East LA. Those two places, East LA, where I worked, and Compton, Watts, Willbrook, they had something in common besides poverty. And they had different cultures. East LA, predominantly Latino, Spanish. Compton, Watts, Willbrook, a lot of, a lot of blacks and English. But man, when it came to alcohol, almost every intersection, you'd find a place to buy alcohol. So as a young man, when I started working, working with those wonderful people that came from West Covina, just strutting around, "I'm from West Covina." "Okay." "What's up, West Covina? Come party with us." So I started into, you know, going with those deputies, coming out here. "Oh, wow. This is nice. This is nice." And it didn't cost an arm and a leg to get here. It wasn't Beverly Hills, but we had some nice standards for families to be raised. And sure enough, when I had an opportunity, I purchased my home here 41 years ago, because I believed in those standards that I saw. I loved those guys that had my back. A lot of them who were deputy sheriffs came right out of here. That's because of what we stood for. A lot of the folks where I, where I grew up, they were on the other side of those keys. They were on the other side of those keys. They were locked up. What made the difference? The standard of living. Those hidden infrastructures, those things that you don't see up front, you know, community service groups. Mr. Kennedy out there teaching kids how to play baseball, learn rules and regulations, learn how to work hard, learn how to show up, be a team. All that's in the mix. And, and I'm telling you, you guys, I, I feel kind of betrayed tonight, especially with the gentleman that's, was here when we've turned this back more than once. I'm, I'm really disappointed and saddened, because, you know, this should have been turned down. There have been a lot of people here, and my, my man here, Hope, he says he's got some information there, where people have written in that feel like I do. They may not be here tonight, but they wrote some letters to tell you, "We love West Covina," and to tell you why we love West Covina. And part of that is the standard, gentlemen. Please, say no.
Thank you, Fred.
Keep things the same. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Next speaker is Oscar Tiscarenno, please.
My name is Oscar Tiscarenno. I work for Extra Mile Convenience Stores LLC. I'm a franchise business consultant here in this area, and I would like to let you know that we are responsible retailer. So we have the tools for the, for the franchisees to scan, to check IDs. We have, we provide all the tools for the franchisees to follow, how to check IDs, all the proper signs, and what signs can be posted and cannot be posted. So I'm here to support the real license here in West Covina, and that's about all I have today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dana Sykes.
Just want to bring up a few, a few items with me. Bottle of wine and a beer can that came out of a multi-pack. Took me two seconds to pull it out of my, my beer can. And it only took me two seconds to drink it. Now, you say, "Oh, well, we're, it's not going to be cold." I've got news for you. When you're drinking beer, you don't want it cold. You want it warm. Why is that? Because you can drink it faster, you can get the buzz going. This wine bottle, I don't need a wine opener. All I have to do is twist it. It's two-buck chuck. Nice and cheap, nice and easy. That's what they'll sell at the gas stations. What, is that what we want? Okay? You know, just a few years ago, there was a young man who got killed at a gas station. He, him and his teenage friends were hanging out there because it's a convenience store too, right? He got killed because the guy said his music was too loud. So kids hang around gas stations. Why not? They got chips, they got hot dogs, they got sodas, all the, the slurpees and all that stuff. So I don't know about you, any of you, have you ever been approached outside a store and say, "Hey, I forgot my ID. Can you pick me up a six-pack?" I have. Do you don't think the kids are going to do that? I mean, let's be real. We have, just this little, nice little chart they gave you. Look at this chart. Okay? What city has the most gas stations? El Monte. Is El Monte an upper scale? No, it's not. It's not, it's not, it's not a nasty place either, but it does have 75. Who's second? We are. Okay? Let's look at Glendora. Glendora's 19.7 miles, but they have half the alcohol sales that we do. Glendora's nineteen point seven miles, but they have half the alcohol sales that we do. Half. And that's, and that's including their gas stations. So why is that? Why are we trying to become even more besotted with alcohol? That, that's the question we have to ask. And I do, I, before I go any farther, I have to, um, address Mr. Redholtz because he mischaracterized and twisted my words the last time I was here. He commented that I called Azusa, Glendora and Covina slummy. I did not. I grew up in Azusa. But I'm also looking at the fact that Azusa has forty-six places to sip by alcohol. Okay? Some areas of Azusa are very nice, million dollar homes, and some are not. But that's the problem. Where are those in gas sta- where are those liquor stores at? They're in the areas that are not as well, off. Because that's where they ma- migrate. You don't find out, you don't find too many liquor stores in South Hills, the ones right next to the freeway. You know, another gentleman commented about the fact that he can pump gas and run next door and get a, um, beer. Well, that tells you right there, we don't need it. If he doesn't have to go anyplace to get the beer, why do we need to have more places to get beer? Wine. And when I say, and I love the comments when people say, "Oh, it's just beer and wine." You get drunk. You drink this bottle of wine, you're going to be drunk, even if it's two buck chuck. Because it doesn't matter, it's the alcohol content. A little shameless promotion here, um, next, uh, a week from Wednesday is the night on the town. I usually run the beer, um, beer and champagne. I do cut people off. Why? Because they're guzzling the, the alcohol. That's all it takes. All we have is a beer and champagne. But it doesn't take much to get drunk if you're guzzling the liquid. Now people who have a higher tolerance, yeah, it's going to take them a little bit longer. But do, how many sixteen-year-old kids have a tolerance level that's high? Eighteen-year-old kid, twenty-one-year-old kid? Not many. So it doesn't take much. All they have to do is go get that beer and wine. All I have to do is say, you know, "Hey, hey man, uh, can you help me out? I'll get, I'll give you five bucks, whatever." And I, there's someone say, "Oh, I did that when I was a kid." I'll, I'll get them some wine or some beer. We don't need any more areas for people to pollute our, our streets. We have to drive on these streets, we already got the marijuana on the streets, let's add, we don't need to add the alcohol too. More alcohol. We have fifty-five places right here. And then that doesn't count the restaurants. Do we really need to add more to the mix? I guess we're trying to, are we trying to pass El Monte, is that it? I mean, seriously. I, I thought we were better than El Monte. Unfortunately, it's things, some people up on the, on the day seem to have an agenda. I don't know. It's not for the residents though. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is, I got a problem with this name. Hazlin Ards at two forty-six North Citrus.
Who's she, are you?
Yeah, let's go with that. Thank you for helping me out there, sir.
Yes, sir. How are you all? You're back here again and then of course, uh, the only reason that I'm really here is because West Covina is letting retailers such as liquor stores, such as grocery stores, you know, to sell beer and wine and convenience store is not mechanic shop anymore. I understand this, this law was passed a long time ago. I understand that residents, you know, they're against it. That was a long time ago, that was for mechanic shop, not, not the convenience store. The time has changed. We, we get so many customers, they come in inside the stores, they don't see beer and we lose sales, they go across the street to Covina or they go to other counties. And benefit for the tax revenue goes to the other county too. And plus, I love to, when I go to convenience store or any store, I, I love to go drive in one store to get whatever I need in one store instead of stopping there, stopping the other place, stopping so many different places. It's, it's, it's safer to get it. It is not, they're not going to be drinking at the premises, there is closed packages, they put them in their car, they take them home. It's much safer than going to the bar or going to a restaurant to consume alcohol, beer and wine, you know, in this case. They drink there and they drive in, in a restaurant or bar. In convenience store, there is no such more danger than if you drive to a liquor store. It's the same thing to me. That wine and beer, I understand that she brought it and showed it, they can do the same thing in liquor store. If this was again, a dry land where nobody could sell it, I understand it. But believe me, this is not a dry land and everybody else are saying that liquor store places like Costco, they have gas, they're, they've got liquor, hard liquor. We're not asking for hard liquor, all we're asking for beer and wine. And again, to me, they're not supposed to be drinking it anyway, they're always closed package, they put them in their car, they drive home. I don't see any danger to it. I don't see, in our, in gas station, most of them, if we see a homeless people, we chase them down, we don't want them around. If I see somebody coming, we're going to put, implement the law so hard that all the danger that they think of is going to be eliminated. Well, of course, there's going to be, something's going to happen, very seldom, which liquor store is happening, if you look at the incidents that's happening, accidents that's happening, it's not people get drunk and get in an accident by going, drinking them in a, in a bar, by drinking them in a restaurant. They drink them and they get in the car to drive, then why do they have a license? You know what I'm saying? It's just, it's, it's, I, again, I know, I don't want to take too, too long of a time. Believe me, convenience store selling beer and wine is not going to put us in danger. If we sell it appropriately, if we know, if we train our staff how to sell it, who to ask for ID, who to refuse sales of alcohol or beer and wine. By sending them, educating them with TABC classes, by, you know, they become a certified TABC, who to ask for ID, who to refuse to sell, you know, to customers, people that they, we feel they're drunk, we feel they're underage, you know, there are so many different things that we can implement and to avoid all the, most of the problem. That's all I've got to say. Appreciate for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you sir. Next speaker is Romel Cipriano.
Well basically, you know, I'm a customer, you know, and I always stop in all the gas station for, you know, pumping gas all the time. Sometimes I grab a coffee, just to continue the road back home or go to work. And I've been hearing, you know, the, the different stories about against the, why it's gas station that have the permit, the right permit and the other license to sell the liquids. Some people, they totally, you know, opposite side, what we trying to say now is, I don't see nothing wrong having a, me a license to sell those liquids and beers and wine in that place because most of the time really, it's nice and quiet, people do the pump, sell service all. And getting to the store, you know, they need what they want, but grabbing something, you know, a coffee or a piece of cake and that. But most people are asking for, "Why you guys don't sell beer? It's convenient for us to know." To just grab, take it home. It's not like idea, some of like it's go to buy and they stand around and start drinking. You don't see that. I never see anything like that. You know? Plus, you know, we got a good service, that's a good thing. A good service that station and I think, uh, it won't be easy for me because it's, if it's just right there, you know, just buy my, pick a party pot of beer and go home and, and drink if I want. But I never around, I never see people drinking around. So I see them in Covina, you see a lot of restaurants up there and then bars and there people drink. They do drink. And I know what they, it's going to happen if I just want beers, it's against the law, I guess, you know? But in gas store, you don't see a drinking people there around the area. You don't see the inconvenience, you know, why you don't have a license? So we can chop it down, the whole thing, where we need it in one place, instead of going different places. That's what I can say real. Thank you.
Thank you sir. Next speaker, Jerry Potras.
I'm really, as a resident, fed up with this issue and I'm really not a happy camper with the business owner who wants to make money. And by doing so, he keeps bringing this issue back. I think the resident views are the views that really should carry a lot of weight. I know when I worked and even now, my friends who have been able to leave Compton, South Central, LA, they look for suburbs, they look for cities like West Covina because alcohol is all over the place, every corner. They're correct. This applicant cannot guarantee what's going to happen at other points of sale. It's our perceptions, we want to retain as much of our suburban city that we can. He can't guarantee that. When I, the, um, standards, the criteria, I, I understand why they're there. I also understand when I was under twenty-one, we were able to buy alcohol. People know how to do that. Limit a six pack, so a couple of people buy one and they share the six pack. My concern is the resident views should prevail. Robert Torres did a, took the time and he, um, showed this last time we were here. That impressed me because we have a resident that took the time, documented what he could see, showed it. They are concentrated in parts of the city, much greater than others. The issue isn't being able to buy alcohol, it's the convenience for this gentleman to sell it and make money. We residents live here. Our views should be the ones that prevail. Once, it's my understanding that once this ordinance, should it get changed, we can't undo it and we're gradually losing the ability to have local control and input into our city. Please don't give this one up. Thank you.
Thank you Jerry. Next speaker, John Sherard. Yeah?
I'm a, a local citizen and I've grown up in this area for many years and a couple of things I just added, uh, before, a couple of comments on the previous gentleman, the last meeting that had that chart out there. They're making it sound like the surrounding communities are slums. Covina, Glendora, whoever, whatever cities that do have sales and gas stations. I totally disagree with that. I've, gas stations I've been to that sell liquor sales, beer and wine, I don't consider it a lowlife area. Maybe in Compton or Watts, there might be some lowlifes, but I don't know in that area. So that's just one point I wanted to mention about this. Uh, and most owners of gas stations in those areas, if there is a problem, they've always seemed to skirt it away in areas where it's in decent communities. I could say just in the other communities, no, because it's out of control, but I don't see those cities having those problems. Couple of other points I just wanted to mention, most of these gas stations now, as the first gentleman mentioned, they're more than just gas stations, they're stores. People go in there, a single guy like me, money, money's of the time, I buy my food in there, except for the major items, and they spend a lot of time in there to get their items and they go home. I can't see many of those people in those cars pulling over in the street and drinking creating a problem. It's grabbing their food, maybe a six pack of beer and bringing it home. You can't compare that to the liquor stores. It's the same thing. They go to the liquor store, it's the same thing, it's just not a gas station. So I don't know why it's against, people would be speaking against a gas station selling alcohol as opposed to a liquor store, you pull into a liquor store and get the same exact item. One other item, I just want to echo what the, the gentleman spoke earlier, can't pronounce his name, I've known him for two years and I don't know how to pronounce his name. Giving up something like this or not, not passing something like this is not going to bring the city of West Covina down. This is probably one of the finest communities in all of San Gabriel Valley and I can't see an item like this changing this city. This city has a great police department, they have a great community department, the living is great to be in this town. I just can't see something like this that would lower the standard of living in this city. And just one last item, which to me should be big for the city, it's that much more tax revenue that the city's going to get. And I know as a commission and a council, that's one thing you've always want, is more tax revenue into the city to create more, uh, things to build in the city. So I'd just like to speak in favor of it and thank you for the time.
Thank you sir. Next speaker is Nate Eunin.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, uh, council members. Thank you very much for your services and keeping this town great. I'm a local businessman. I have a shop in the city of West Covina. And the simple reason why I'm kind of against this whole, uh, passing is, when I entered, uh, West Covina about almost fifteen years ago, West Covina was a lot different than it is now. It's unfortunate, it's not just West Covina, it's, it's all over the place. We have a huge, uh, transient problem. We have a huge, um, mental illness problem. We have a huge problem with, uh, law enforcement, aren't really allowed to do their jobs that the citizens need. And I'm not, I mean, I, I don't want to start conflict with any of my neighbors or gas station owners, you know, they all have a family, I understand. But everybody knows when you come and own a gas station in West Covina, everybody knows that this station will not have beer and wine. So sometimes they don't know, they don't do their homework before purchasing it and, you know, it's unfortunate, that's business. You know, a lot of people want to come into this town and try to flip a gas station, you know, "Oh, it doesn't have a license, let's put a license and sell it for, uh, make a, make a few hundred grand," for example. Doesn't, what, West Covina, I mean, they're a little bit smarter, you know? But I do know a lot of the citizens that live here locally and that do have families here and they're really upset at the condition of the town. And, uh, I'm always going to be with the citizens of the city and I do respect your decision, but, uh, I wouldn't let my mother go shop at nighttime because of the condition of our city. Let alone let her go to a gas station without a liquor license or a beer license. I wouldn't let her go fill up gas, I would go fill up my mother's car because I don't trust the, the condition of the town. And unfortunately, I, I love law enforcement, I always support law enforcement, I don't think the law enforcement are able to do the job we need them to do right now. So maybe further on down the road when the situation is better in the town and police are able to do their jobs, bring it back to the table again. But as of right now, I just don't think that there's a need for it. People that liquor stores turn away, responsible business people that they turn away, we don't want them to have other options to go score liquor or beer or wine somewhere else. You know, liquor store owners carry a lot of responsibility holding a liquor license. We have a lot more rules to follow than somebody that holds a regular beer and wine license. We are responsible of everything in our shop, in our parking lot, in our shopping center, up to two hundred feet. Beer and wine license holders are not. We hold the burden. We want a safe environment, we want to work in a good community, we want families to start coming back to the businesses and going out at night. West Covina is a beautiful town, it's a great city. Other cities, it's like the cemetery at eight o'clock, everybody's asleep. There's life in this town, there's a lot of potential. We really need to clean up the city. And I really hope one day law enforcement is able to do their job. And, uh, I respect your decision and I respect the community, citizens, to me, it's up to the citizens. But thank you for your time.
Sir, can I ask you just a question? What is your business?
Excuse me?
What is your business?
I'm a liquor store owner.
Liquor store owner.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Next speaker is Eddie Elda.
I'm probably one of your oldest, I've been here forty-three years. When I came in here, I live in South Hills, I used to go to Charlie Bar- When I came in here, I live in South Hills, I used to go to Charlie Barker's. Gas was $0.30 a gallon. They come out, wash your windows, air up your tires. Great life. Never even get out of the car. Times are changed. You know, you get your oil changed there. Three, four years later, I started to go in the Chevron Station. I've been there 40 years. And just, I go to the same place all the time, you know? I do the same things. And it's all about convenience. There, you know, we're living in a different age. You can't go get your oil changed there anymore. That's all done, you know? We're just living, you know, gas is $4 a gallon. It's not $0.30. We're in a different world. But it is convenient. You go in, you know, halftime I get gas, I buy a lottery ticket. Haven't been winning, but I'm buying. But, you know, you may as well get something else. I get ice there once in a while. And, you know, it just, it's just convenience. We're, we're living in a time where times are changed. And just, you know, beer and wine is nothing. It doesn't matter where you buy it. And it's, it's just convenient for the people that go to the same place all the time that they don't have to go someplace else. Nobody's going to go out of their way to drive over to Citrus and Rowan Workman to buy beer and wine. They just happen to be there getting gas. And so, you know, it's just convenient for them. It has nothing to do with everybody else in the city. And they're not going to go down and give it to kids or anything else. They're just going to take it home and, and use it like any, any other normal person and not have to go someplace else to get it. I think it's a real simple decision. It's convenient everywhere, if you, everywhere you go in the United States. Usually you pull in, you can get, you buy something and you're going to take it out, on down the road. It just don't make sense. It seems like a real simple decision. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, George Safer.
Hello, good evening. My name is George Safer. I've been resident in San Yumus for 33 years. Store business owner, liquor store in the city of West Covina since 1992. 25 years and, and keg liquor in West Covina also. I'm here to talk about the gas and alcohol. They passed ordinance 45 years ago, I believe 1975, that no alcohol goes with gas. And for a reason. They don't want people driving and drinking at the same time. Whoever comes into the city of West Covina, gas stations, they know, no alcohol allowed. Now they go for beer and wine license. You give it to them. What's it say after a while? They go for a liquor license. When's it going to stop? I agree with buying gas and snacks and energy drinks and all that while drinking and driving because we all do one point or another. But it's too easy to buy alcohol and drive gas at the same time. They're mentioning Samstube Desert. Samstube's gas is 1,000 feet away from going to another building to buy alcohol. That's not going to happen and everything else. City of West Covina is great. I love it. I love working in it and everything else. Homeless people has increased 75% this year compared to usual. Home people, homeless people seem to hang around gas stations a lot more than liquor stores. Run the trash cans and everything else. We don't need that in West Covina to keep improving. Especially the way they consume alcohol. Beer runs. Beer runs are more convenient for, you could check the record. Liquor stores don't have that many. Beer runs, gas stations are right next to the streets and everything else for kids to be parked on the street and get a 12-pack or 18-pack for a beer run. Kids, you don't want kids doing that, 18, 19, 20-year-old doing that. It's too easy for them to do that. We had a couple in liquor stores. We got the license plate and stopped them. Gas stations, I don't think they're allowed to go after them and everything else like we do. We protect ourselves and everything. Anyway, for beer runs, just look, look at your record on that one. 29 counties don't allow alcohol in gas stations. 29 counties, and I don't believe West Covina should even start and everything else because of their reputation that they know when they come in the city, no alcohol is allowed in gas stations. If they want alcohol, let them go buy in the alcohol liquor license or whatever they want to. They shouldn't, they should know automatically, no alcohol separates from gas because it's too easy to get to and drink while you're driving, just like when you do your snacks and everything else. We don't want that. They're comparing gas stations to restaurants. You could drink at a restaurant. Restaurant, you eat and everything else. You have a drink or two. You're eating, drinking on a full stomach. Isn't that the same as gas station and alcohol? You fill up your tank, you go get a six-pack of beer. You could easily open up and drink it while you're driving. It's not the same. They're comparing that restaurant to gas stations. Not the same. I want to bring up the email that you guys didn't agree, well, someone didn't agree for Mr. Frederick email to be read. Not everybody asked for their emails to be read, but Mr. Frederick did. And that's why you should have allowed it. Not everybody asked to be read. And if it's, if there was too many emails that would have been asked to be read, I would agree not to read them all. But not everybody asked. I think just Mr. Frederick asked to read the email. I think you should have allowed it. If you do pass it, my cousin was building a, a place and they asked for parking spaces. I think right now it's four parking for 1,000 square feet. If you do regulate it, can you make it at least five or six parking for their regulation to make a little stricter regulation? Thank you for listening to me. I appreciate and hope you make the right decision.
Thank you, sir.
And by the way, if it does pass, we will appeal it. Thank you very much.
Okay, I have one more card left. Larry Kelsey. If anyone else wishes to be heard on this item, please fill out a card. Okay.
Hi, Larry Kelsey. I was born and raised in this area. And I get my gas, car wash, lotto tickets, coffee at that gas station. I have to go somewhere else to pick up a six-pack or 12-pack or something to take home for that evening. Makes it so much easier just to stop in, make it a one-type shop. You know, all the revenue or everything would go into the city of West Covina. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Angie Gillingham, come on down. Turn in the card, Phil, and we'll call.
I just want to say, I wasn't prepared to speak, but I will say something. Before you guys became commissioners, you were all longtime residents, I believe. And you will be residents once you leave this commissioners board. So what I want you to remember is, we are a family-oriented community. Your first question should be, does the policy change make West Covina a better place for families? If the answer is no, you should reject the change. I am not coming up here pretending that I know that anybody who buys alcohol is going to take it home and do the right thing and drink it in their privacy of their own home. I don't pretend, as others have come up and said, there, everybody who buys alcohol is responsible. There are too many records to claim against that. So we all know that. I, I would hope that would be the case, but that isn't. But first, we should be considered first. The community always should come first. As you leave here tonight, you will be driving in your cars. We allow 55 stations open up their sales to alcohol. We are all at risk. So please take in consideration of the letters that you have before you have come. This subject has come many years in front of you. We have always fought it. There have been more people and just because there's more liquor, uh, gas station owners here tonight than there are community people, does not mean we don't care. So please, take us in first. Thank you.
Thank you, Angie. Phil Kaufman?
Good evening. As the gentleman a couple of speakers ago said, it's a different world today than it was 20, 30, 40 years ago. I just cannot understand how a historical anomaly like this continues to exist. What is the difference between a gas station where you pull up in your car and you go in and you buy something? What is the difference between that and any other type of convenience store with a parking lot directly in front of the door? It just seems to be a difference that has long since, long ceased to have any actual meaning. Another gentleman mentioned something about kids buying liquor and underage. I assume is, is what he meant, underage kids. But the same restrictions, the same laws apply whether it's a gas station, a liquor store, Vons, Stater Brothers, Walmart, Target, whoever sells liquor. The owner of that establishment has a duty. There's, there's laws, regulations, guidelines that they have to follow to ensure that they only sell to adults and not to anyone who's already intoxicated. And, you know, those laws apply across the board, especially with this long list of guidelines that would be in effect if you, if and when you approve this measure. The arguments that more alcohol, more stores selling alcohol means more alcohol sales really is, is just an assumption that fails. People who want to buy alcohol buy it today. Having more options, having more convenience, having more, more alternatives doesn't mean that the amount of sales is going, the amount of alcohol sold is going to go up in totality. The idea that there's going to be a sudden group of, of gas stations all selling alcohol is just ridiculous. If you look at the list of neighboring cities, the most, any city has in the area is six. Most have two or three. There's only been a couple of applicants who have wanted to add alcohol sales to their, to their gas station facility. And the idea that there's going to be every gas station on every corner selling alcohol is ridiculous. Especially with some of these restrictions, like the size of the facility, the location of the alcohol sales. Most gas stations are, are happy with selling $4.25 gasoline per gallon. They're not going to disrupt an ongoing business to redesign their business in order to add alcohol, add alcohol that may or may not increase their overall profits. Like I said, and I've said before at this microphone before, when this issue has been raised, this is a historical anomaly. There's really no honest, meaningful distinction between any other store with a parking lot in front of the door than a gas station where the, the same person would drive up, get out of their car, go inside and buy something. It's a distinction that should no longer exist.
Thank you, Phil. Michael Tuie, please.
I'm Michael Tuie. I'm the owner of Rockview Dairy number 29. I've owned it for 42 years. I believe I'm one of the longest business owners in this community, especially in the beer and wine business. Our dairy was unique too when it was first built. They didn't have drive-through dairies in West Covina. Ours was first built in February of 1970. That and the Royal Crest Dairy on Azusa and Roland were the first dairies. So times do change and they allow dairies and they allow dairies to sell alcohol. I happen to have a beer and wine license directly across the street from Community Presbyterian Church and Walnut Grove Middle School. And we've never had a problem in 42 years. The license has been there 44 years. Ranch Market, next door to the other side of the church, has had a license for 50 years. And I believe Ranch Market was the first market in all of West Covina. That happened to be when the Hubbard's opened it up. I want to make sure George and Ron, they're going to be mad at me. I, I have elbowed them many times playing basketball in, in my career. I did elbow them quite a bit. But they're, they're friends. And I'm, I'm just saying it's, it, times have changed and it's different. And I'm not concerned with competition. There are special laws put against dairies, so you guys understand the men and women here on this planning commission. When dairies were allowed to get beer and wine licenses or hard liquor licenses, the business and professions codes for the state of California require our customers to step out of the car to purchase alcohol. That was a special provision put against us by the liquor store industry and the grocery store industry. But we have lived by it and that is our law. And that's what we do. I'm just saying it's a matter of convenience. That's what my store is. I'm not concerned with other people selling. My father, back in 1969 or 70, when he was the executive director of the Southern California Service Station Association and the International Service Station Association, fought very hard for many years to get U-Haul allowed. Because some planning people back then didn't believe that gas stations should have any other services. It was this gas and auto repair. Like they said, times have changed. And my dad fought for USA Gasoline to fire the flag. My father was the expert witness. And the gasoline pricing you see on corners was what my father fought for, that everyone has to show their price. But gasoline stations have changed. So has the market. And no matter where you go, I heard George say that you may have people underage do a runner. I don't care what age you are, if you try to do a runner at my store, whether you're a minor or an adult, you're going to be dealt with the same way. Normally getting knocked down. But there is issues. Any problems we have currently with homeless and alcohol, you can't put on gas stations because they're not the ones selling it. So I don't know who sits in judgment on that call. And that was raised here not too long ago, that if you give it to gas stations, you're going to have problems. And there's homeless. They're here now. And if they're at gas stations, they're not there for the alcohol or beer and wine. I want to make sure when I say this about West Covina lines, I am a sponsor of their event. But even them, they have added beer and wine to their event to make it more festive. And that's in a non-controlled environment. But they did it. And I support that. I want to make sure because I am one of your endorsers.
It is, it is controlled too.
Well, I'm not concerned with the light. I'm just saying they are there and the people walk around with open beverages there. But no matter what, when you're at that event, just like when you're at a grocery, I mean, at a restaurant, you will go whether you had food or not. Or at a bar, you will drink and drive. That's a guarantee. As the alcohol level goes down, I believe it's going down to .5, it will, people will not ever be doing that. I mean, there's still going to be knuckleheads no matter what. But I do believe it's unfair. We should have open competition for everybody. And I know everyone here, if Sprouts, when Sprouts comes in, they're going to want alcohol license there. And if Trader Joe's says they would come back, everyone here would say they support Trader Joe's getting a beer and wine license. I don't want to be hypocritical. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tuie. Good timing. Anyone else wish to be heard on this who has not spoken already? Going once, going twice? Okay. The public comment portion of the study session will be, come to an end. And at this point, the commission needs to conduct the business of a study session, in my view. I think we should talk about the, the list of standards that have been given to us and see if we want to add to that, or change them, or eliminate them. Who would like to take a stab at, at this? I have a question, actually, before we take a stab at it, for staff. Is there a way that we can put a limit or a cap on how many of these licenses that we allow? I remember several years ago, we had a gentleman who wanted to do a food truck license. And at the time, you know, everybody with the food truck was operating illegally. So we created a system for licensing and we put a cap at six. I'm just wondering if that is something, because, you know, I don't think anybody, people are up here, you know, there's going to be 15 or 17 or whatever overnight liquor stores, which is certainly not the, the intent. Is there a way that we could limit that?
We can certainly look into that. I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head.
I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head. One other thing maybe I bring up because I had a chance to look at the code. There are four other sections of, they're not in front of me, they're over there, but conditional use permit, AUPs, instructional tasting where people can taste alcohol, and I think there's one, hotels. So there's four other categories right now in the code of, and they all have some conditions, but the most I think is four. So there's, and none of them, I don't think any of them are the same as these. So none of these ones are in the code right now. So hopefully maybe that helps answer that.
Very good. Thank you. Well, as far as the standards go, I don't see anybody jumping in here, so.
Well, Sheena wanted to go first.
Oh, Sheena, did you want to be heard?
Yeah, I'll go. I guess through the years, this is not the first time that we're talking about this discussions. Prior to Greg Hockes and Glenn Kennedy that was sitting here, we actually had several study sessions with residents coming over to have a discussion on the houses, and they just talk about what it is that they, majority of them, do not want to change our code. And I want to say that before we jump to the standard portion, this is a study session. Now, the study session does not mean that we have to change the code. It's basically a study session to see if we can make the changes. And I guess that's a better question, is that before we can jump to this, some of the standards that we put upon, we're assuming that we're changing the code. But before we can actually make that decision is that it's a study session, the study session can remain the same, or it can be changed. I understand that two of the commissioners are quite new, and this is probably the second study sessions that we have. But if you look back through, for the last two, three years, we have had these study sessions quite a few times with different residents that are here tonight. And over and over again, we do hear that they prefer not to have the code changed, and we need to have that discussion first. Because as I understand it, it is a study session, and I just want to make it clear that just because we're having a study session doesn't mean that we have to change the code and put new standards into the code. So first, we need to determine whether, one, do we want to change it or not? And if we do want to change it, are we going to put some standards so that we can make that adjustment?
Commissioner Hing, Vice Chair Hing, is that a motion? Would you like to make a motion?
Make a motion to see if the code gets changed?
Make a motion, whatever. To make a motion, to see whether you want to go forward or not. Because quite frankly, if you decide to make a motion to not go forward, which is certainly within your prerogative, and then we'll take a vote and see what happens, but if there is no consensus to go forward, then there's no reason to waste our time to discuss.
Oh, I'll make the motion then. I'll make the motions to not go forward.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner, Vice Chair Hing, do not go forward. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second by Holtz. May we have a roll call, please, on this motion?
Commissioner Holtz?
I would mean.
Correct. I would mean not go forward, no would mean to continue to work towards a code amendment. Commissioner Hing?
Aye.
Commissioner Kennedy?
No.
Commissioner Hockes?
No.
Commissioner Reddell, Chairman Reddell.
No. So the motion does fail on a three to two vote. So now, we need to, in my view, concentrate on standards and conditions as part of the study session. Commissioner Hockes?
Yes, I think a good place to start would be with, you know, the standards and conditions that are presented here in the staff report, and one by one, discuss merits and applicability of applying them to off-sale, I'll call it licenses at gas stations. I'd like to just, you know, just sort of go down the list and make my comment on why I think maybe it has merit or not, or whether it should be applied or not. The very first one is regarding requiring a conditional use permit. I think that's probably something that, you know, if the code amendment were to go forward, would be something of a standard, you know, procedure. Number two, the advertising of beer and wine should not be permitted at motor fuel islands. Here's an example of, one of several in here, that are specific to sales at gas stations and are different, is different from any other type of off-sale, I'll call it, you know, licensing situation. And so I would certainly, using this one example and others, be in favor of anything that adds specificity to the conditions as they apply specifically to gas stations. Number three is single container sales of multi-pack, I'll call it beverages, are prohibited. I find this interesting because I don't know why that wouldn't necessarily apply to the local 7-Eleven or any other similar business that is no, that is no different in that respect. And to, you know, maybe that's something that should be addressed for all businesses that, where that could potentially apply. I believe Commissioner Holtz wants to say.
Okay, we can discuss, we can, because I have some comments too. Commissioner Holtz?
Okay. The people that have been grandfathered to sell single cans and all that, they have the ability to sell single cans. That was approved before, so they wouldn't fall under this.
Okay, that's, okay, that's an excellent comment or observation on why this would be different. And therefore, I would have no, I personally would have no objection then to number three in that case.
Let me, if I can just, please, add on to that. I would like to actually toughen that a little bit and make it a six-pack minimum. So we're, you know, we're not allowing them to have single containers, but I would rather have a, you know, because you could do a two-pack, you know? You could have, a manufacturer could make, you know, a two or a three-pack, you know? So I'd like to see it be a six-pack minimum myself.
For sake, yeah, for sake of brevity of this, because we have other items. Why don't you go through them, state what you think? We'll bring it back. This isn't going to be, you still have a hearing to go, at least one hearing. So we will put that in there.
Go ahead, go ahead, Commissioner Hockes.
Okay. Identification card readers required to determine the authenticity of the, excuse me, the identification that displays the age of the individual. And maybe, Jeff, you might speak to how that possibly applies to other similar businesses and whether or not that's usually, is that already a given condition that's applied to them when they apply for a license?
Yeah, well, something that Commissioner Holtz said is very important here. I don't fully understand the history of West Covina, where we were very free with ABC licenses in one sense for liquor stores, but very restrictive for service stations. So until about five, six years ago, we didn't put any conditions on alcohol sales at stores. So that's only been in the last few, so there's probably only one or two uses in town that we even have conditional use permits. Everything else is by right, and they're free to do whatever they want to, and there's nothing we can do about it because they've been existing for some time. So that, and again, I will say, I believe this was volunteered by the applicant. So the applicant, I, these are all volunteered by the applicant, these weren't things that we came up with. And so I think they believe that they know how to do that and can do it, and maybe do it in other stores outside the city. So that's what I would say. These aren't things that were brainstormed by staff, these were things that were suggested by the applicant.
Okay. That's also very helpful. Now, could we, in that case, are these, maybe I should just ask, before going through all the entire list, could we hear from the applicant as to whether or not they have any particular concerns or issues with any of these conditions? Or are they willing to, you know, accept all of them if that was, you know, presented to them as a condition?
Mr. Chairman? Yes, Mr. Commissioner Holtz? Put your mic on, please.
It keeps going off. One thing I noticed there, there's no restriction on the hours of operation. Okay?
Yeah, one second, one second. Commissioner Holtz, let me, we can, we, this is all an open book. We can add that, delete, add, anything we want between now and the public hearing and at the public hearing. So that's, I have that on my notes too, as far as hours too.
When Mr. Carman gets done talking, I would like to have a moment to express my feelings on this, if that's possible.
Certainly, certainly.
Thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
I'm owner of MSTN Chevron Gas Station. The rule and regulation on selling the alcohol is provided by the manufacturer or city, that whatever they require by them. Their hours is different on Sundays, hours different on Saturdays, during the day is different, single package, whatever, is all up to you guys, see how you're going to notice to do that. Certain cities says you have to sell it, you cannot sell it after certain hours, but the general rule is totally different. That's why we have the, we can come up with a solution, just, that's why we want to put the option. I mean, the required, the requirement you guys have, then we go towards, I mean, work towards that for your convenience and customer convenience, you know? Here is a set rule on hourly, how to sell it. I mean, you cannot sell it early in the morning. You have to start from like 11 o'clock during the week, and it, yes, weekends and the different hours, and you cannot stop, you have to stop working in and after midnight. But some cities, they're different, some cities they say after 2:00, I mean, before 2:00, you cannot, I mean, after 2:00, you cannot sell it. Some cities say at 12:00, you cannot sell it. But that's what this, we're just here to put in some rule, regulation together, then we go towards, work towards that.
Any questions? Yes, Commissioner Hockes?
So my question for you then is, do you, would you support all of these standards that have been?
We do, yeah.
Okay.
And you would be amenable to whatever hours restrictions that we might come up with?
Our cities, yes.
Okay, very good. Any other questions for this gentleman? No? Okay. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Holtz?
Okay, we took a quick vote here if you wanted to go forward or not, and really didn't give me an opportunity to express my feelings why I voted no. So I'd like to, with your permission, take a moment to hear me out. You know, I consume alcohol, and I've never had a problem in a city finding a place to drink alcohol. Never been inconvenienced, I mean, it's a block away, two blocks away. Currently, we have 55 locations now with off-sale licenses, with two more coming aboard, which would be Sprouts and a 7-Eleven at Azusa in Fuente. In addition, in that shopping center, we have Walmart, Target, Bevmo, and we will have Sprouts in a very small, compact area. There are 17 additional gas stations in the city with stores attached that I believe will want similar accommodations if we approve this one, because we lose control of being able to shut them down or to say no. And I can see them lined up as soon as this thing is passed, if it passes. We had a petition here, I forget which meeting it was, where there was almost 800 names of citizens that were against alcohol in gas stations. The last, one of the last meetings, we had 11 people here against, and the gentleman that's asking for this had a handful of people that were his friends and business associates. You know, as far as I'm concerned, our job here is twofold. We're to listen to the citizenry of what they want, and we're to do what's best for the city. And I think the citizens have spoken. I mean, they put a petition out and got 800 signatures, and then we had a stack more tonight that were against it, and then all of a sudden, boom, you know, let's go ahead with it. The issue was abandoned before in 2008 and 2010. I don't have a problem with the standards, the standards are good. But my concern is who's going to police that? The police department isn't. ABC isn't going to do it. Code enforcement's not going to do it. So I hear all these, excuse me, I have a cold. I hear all these things about they're going to have card readers and all that type of thing, but who's going to police that? Nobody. You know, so they can do what they want. The other thing that caught my eye in the paper the other day, it's about two weeks ago, was this article. Now, it's a little different product, but it's cigarettes going to juveniles. Okay? The federal government did this study. The largest retail store, or retail stores in the United States that are selling illegal cigarettes to minors. You want to take a guess what it is? It's gas stations. It's gas stations. So why would this be any different? Right now, Mr. Carman is in violation of our code in the city. He's got flag banners up on his property. I think he has six or seven of them. Those are illegal. Now, you have to ask yourself, as I have, who does this benefit? Only one person, Mr. Carman. It doesn't benefit liquor stores, it doesn't benefit anybody else. There won't be any more sales, I mean, there's only so many sales. So you're diluting the sales from, like alcohol, excuse me, liquor stores, that's their primary business, but all you're doing is moving it from here to over here. It's not going to increase sales, it's not going to be any more benefit for the city, you know? So who does it benefit? The gentleman that owns the gas station, that's the only one. You know, it just takes away from the stores. I just, I just can't phantom approving this thing because of one person. So that's why I'm really against it. But again, I'm kind of hoodwinked here because they asked if they wanted to go forward, and it was three to two to go forward. Now, when it comes up to vote, I can vote against it, but I wanted to be heard because those are my reasons. And I'd like anybody to tell me where I'm going wrong. I just don't see it. I just don't see it. Thank you.
Any other, Commissioner Kennedy?
Getting back to these things, I'd like to see it at 2,000 square feet. I would like to see no singles. I'm okay with selling the three packs at 24-ouncers, and hours are an issue with me. So, you know, I was born and raised in this city. I've been here my whole life. When I was a kid, all the gas stations were, you know, you pulled up, the guy came out, he cleaned your windows, he checked your oil. You could buy tires, you could buy, you know, whatever you needed for your car. Well, them days are long gone, and everything's a convenience store now. And I don't know, unlike you guys, I'm, I shop at 7-Eleven, that's just me. I'm the kind of guy that I pull in and I want to get everything at once. I don't want to go to three different stores. So I said from the very beginning, I am pro-business. I am pro-business. I do not want to deny these people or any other business. You know, we have 17 gas stations? Can we make 17 liquor stores? No. You guys want zero, they want 17, so I'm ready for a happy medium. I'm looking at maybe three, four at the most.
Thank you. You want to continue talking about conditions, or? I don't know how long, how long to take the study session? Yeah, well, I've talked about a few of mine, but, go ahead, Jeff.
Well, I mean, I think, I think there was some discussion, and it sounded like the applicant was in agreement with the conditions that he recommended, which, that's sort of a surprise, isn't it? But if that's the case, I'm not sure if there's more discussion or more conditions, or you just need to give us a motion and direct us to go forth and prepare an order. or you just need to give us a motion and direct us to go forth and prepare an ordinance. I mean, we're not done, it's gonna prepare an ordinance, we come back, and, you know, you can still massage it some. I, I wanna, I wanna make sure that we all understand that we sometimes go into this where we, we pick out all these conditions, but you don't really have to do that. Requiring conditional use from it requires you to craft conditions every time, and if you have a set of conditions that you use, you can pick and choose from that as you go. You don't wanna over, have too many conditions, because there are different circumstances that you wanna be able, you know, some may need a higher standard, some may need a lower standard, depending on where they're at. So I think that's, that's important here. We don't have to, you don't have to bottle in every single thing that might come up, because that's what the conditional use from it hearings for. And a condition, and is, it should be understood that a conditional use from it is not required to be approved, it's a discretionary action that the planning commission can deny. You don't have to approve it, so even if they approve this code amendment, the planning commission throughout the future may deny every single application that comes forward for a conditional use from it. You know, I don't, I'm not saying that's gonna happen, I'm just saying that, that can happen. It's, it's not against the rules for that to happen. So I think maybe, rather than sit here and try to figure out what everything should be in here, maybe the best thing is, I mean, there may be some other conditions you think are good. I'd put down hours of operation, that may be something, though, that we really wanna leave open a little bit, but we, we can, if you have others, but otherwise, I think we're, we're ready to, for you to give us direction, we can go, it'll probably take us a little while, it's not gonna be back to the next meeting, probably not even in June, it'll be a while, because we need to work with the city attorney's office to make sure it's crafted correctly.
Okay, let me just say one last, one thing, I, I agree, Commissioner Kennedy brought up the minimum of, of two thousand square feet, I would, I would concur with that.
Parking, as well.
Okay, and parking?
Yeah, what about parking? I, you know, the guy, gentleman saying he wanted to, it was four, I, I would like to at least double that to eight, maybe ten. Well, that's based on the size of the, well, I, I think that should be a requirement. You gotta have enough parking, you know?
So, let me, let me just say what that, what that says is, that's what sixteen would say, you have to have enough parking. In other words, you can't have less parking than required by code. Now, if, there are probably many service stations in town, maybe most of the service stations in town, that don't have excess parking, including probably the ones we have here tonight. So if you put that standard in, you may actually allow something that nobody can do, if you follow what I'm saying. So, and I don't know that we have the ability to go out and, we have to know the square footage of the store, we, and we have so many parking spaces for each one to, to answer that question. I just, in my experience with service stations, they don't usually have very much excess parking. So if you, my suggestion would be just leave that in there. You still have the ability, when you review a conditional use from it, to say, hey, you need more parking, you don't have enough parking. I go there all the time, there's never parking, people are backing up into the street, you could still deny it for that very reason, because it doesn't, there's a finding about traffic congestion. So my suggestion would be, I wouldn't, I wouldn't change that, I would leave this standard here, this is, you have to meet parking standard. If they meet the parking standard, they can apply, then you can discuss whether they need excess parking.
Yes, Commissioner Holtz?
Keeps going off. Anyway, I'd like to be excused, my son, or my daughter and son-in-law are getting a national award over at the West Covina School District. Thank you.
You may be excused, and congratulations to them. Thank you. Let me just add a little comment here. One of the speakers mentioned the fact that the, the applicants, the, the service station owners are, are basically, you know, looking for this and in it for the money. They wanna increase their sales and their business and so forth, and, you know, I mean, yeah, I think so. But it's also, we also need to remember that a lot of speakers that spoke tonight have skin in the game. We had several people that are in the liquor store business, and I understand their situation, too. They are looking to protect their business. So you've got businesses that are here doing business in West Covina, which we like and welcome, and they're trying to protect their business, and they're trying to grow their business. So you can't say it's good for this guy and bad for that guy. You gotta have kind of a level playing field, which is what this is all about. You know, it's funny, I've, I've, one of the speakers brought up, you know, that you're gonna get approached at a gas station, you know, here, give me, here's five bucks, go buy me a six-pack. You know, I mean, that hasn't happened to me at a gas station, obviously now, 'cause, you know, we don't allow it, but it has happened to me in front of Vons', it's happened to me in front of Albertson's, any retail establishment that is selling beer and wine, the potential of that happening is there. It's gonna be there, whether service stations, gas stations are selling beer and wine or not. It's gonna happen, and it's, you talk about the oldest profession, that's one of the oldest scams. I mean, you know, people, you know, go and buy me cigarettes, go and buy me beer, that's, they're not gonna change whether this goes through or not. And one of the individuals, as, as Mr. Toohey alluded to, was, you know, up here complaining about, you know, conditions of West Covina. It's terrible, there's homeless, there's this and that, you know, you, all over the place, and that's now. You know, I mean, you can't certainly blame that on beer sales anywhere, I mean, that's just, that's happening now. So anyway, I just kinda wanted to just have, add that, those comments, and any other comments? Commissioner Hachaz?
Just to add to some of what you said, I, and I was, I shared the same thoughts that you had, and, and further in addition, when hearing some of the comments we heard about, you know, whether or not, you know, homelessness was, is a factor in this, and it's, you know, like you said, it's here now, it's a complete non sequitur. It doesn't, it doesn't matter whether or not you get approached by a homeless person at a gas station, or a Seven-Eleven, or at a public park. It's, it's a here and now problem, and it's, it has nothing to do with, or, gas station, alcohol sales, have nothing to do with exacerbation of a homeless problem. The other comment I heard was from another speaker, was that, you know, we're, you know, that we're looking to catch up with El Monte, or, or Azusa, with the number of establishments that sell alcohol. And apparently, math must have, the basic math must have escaped that argument, because, you know, we're talking about a, a city that's half the size of West Covina, and if you do the math, there is the number of establishments that sell alcohol in, in El Monte, and with the simple calculator, you know, exercise, was more than seven establishments per square mile versus less than half that in West Covina. So that, that density concern, the math doesn't add up there. It's just, it's as simple as that. And then, probably the most important thing is fairness, you know, fairness to, to all businesses, and, and this might not be the last issue that we address when it comes to fairness, fairness to all businesses. The, you know, we're surrounded by communities that are very similar in, in nature, in terms of their, their, the living standards, their demographic makeup, their economic vitality, and some, I might even suggest, might even be doing a little better than West Covina right now for certain reasons. And I see no evidence to date that sales of alcoholic gas stations are contributing to a decline in their standard of living. Where is the evidence? It's all been, pretty much what I've heard so far, been supposition and emotion, and, and all at the price of being unfair to certain business owners. So one day, I hope we don't have to, you know, revisit another situation where businesses are, are coming to this commission and saying, I'm being singled out, because, you know, you know, there are certain people who just don't like what I sell, or what service I provide. And, and unless there's some compelling argument that it's gonna create a decline in the livability of our community, I don't see why any business should be punished for offering the services that they, they have. You know, there's plenty of, there's plenty of businesses out there that we should be concerned about. I'm glad we don't have, you know, we don't have cannabis sales in this city. I see that as definitely the sort of thing that would impact the livability of the city, but this isn't one of those cases. And so until I see harder evidence of, of it causing a decline in the standard of living in this, in this city, I, it's, it's really a non-issue, you know, that's based on personal feelings.
No, 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 no.
No, you may not.
Nope, that's done, thank you.
And, and just, and just lastly, you know, I think, you know, when, you know, when this, if this does go forward to the city council, you know, this is gonna, with a proposed code amendment, they still have the opportunity to deny our recommendation. And, you know, we're doing this on our own, our own best judgment of what, what we think is right, because we're, we're here, you know, at the, as, as, you know, having the privilege of serving, you know, with the, the recommendation of the city council, to, you know, to represent views that we think are for, you know, are gonna act in, for the betterment of the community. It, and, and when we make those judgments, I really believe that it's really a matter of, are we doing the right thing in our own best judgment? Or is it because if we think that eight hundred people are not correct in their way of thinking on an issue, but it's eight hundred of them, therefore we have to follow them, then we shouldn't be on this commission?
Thank you, Commissioner Hachaz. So, Mr. Director, what's, do you have the information you need to?
Well, we'd want a motion from, to direct us to go forward, to prepare a code amendment with those standards
Okay.
as shown in the staff report, and, and as commented on. Just a couple of comments, but
Please.
really, the only thing I really got was the two thousand square foot, and so twenty-five hundred, and then may have something about hours of operations. Those are the only two additions, everything else, we believe, pretty much the same.
Do you wanna continue with that of the hours of operation discussion?
Well, let, let, I, that's what I'm suggesting.
Yeah.
Not tonight. I know you guys are enjoying this conversation, but we have some other items
Yeah.
where it's getting late, and, and I don't know, we wanna beat a dead horse too much.
Right.
I think we'll come back with hours of operation in there, and give you some options on how you might wanna approach that.
That's fine. So is there a motion to go forward?
Yes, I'd make the motion to move forward.
Okay, we have a motion by Kennedy.
And I second that motion.
Seconded by Hachaz. End of discussion? Then let me have a, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes three to one. Thank you. Thank you all for coming.
Good, I'm two, go to I'm two to wireless.
So I guess we'll go back to number two. pretty well cleaned out.
Pretty much empty.
Pretty much empty, so we know where the interest lies, folks. Okay.
Yeah. Small wireless facilities.
Yes. All right, so let's go to, back to item number two, which is a study session, code amendment number one-six-zero-three concerning small wireless facilities in the public right-of-way. May we have the staff report, Mr. Director? Who will be presenting that?
Joanne will be presenting that for us.
Thank you.
Thank you, chair members of the commission. I'll go ahead and begin with a little bit of background information. On February sixteen, two thousand sixteen, the city council initiated the code amendment pertaining to wireless facilities in the public right-of-way. This code amendment wasn't acted upon until recently, because the city was awaiting some court, major court cases, and also waiting to see if certain laws that the state were considering would be passed. On September twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen, the Federal Commission, Communication Commission released its, will release an FCC order. I'll go ahead and go over that, that FCC order in, in another slide, following, following this particular slide, later on in the presentation. On April fourteen, two thousand nineteen, the California Supreme Court decision on T-Mobile West LLC versus City and County of San Francisco, Etelle, was made, which validated the city's authority to regulate the aesthetics of small wireless facilities in the public right-of-way. On April twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, the cit, the City of West Covina's Planning Commission adopted design guidelines for small wireless facilities in the public right-of-way. This is due beca, due to the FCC order. The FCC order required that design guidelines, or the design, design regulations be published in advance in the, by April, and so at that, at this time, the staff, staff rushed the, prepared design guidelines and presented to the commission for adoption. I'll go ahead and go over the September two thousand eighteen FCC order. The FCC order defines what a small wireless facility is, and the definition is, is very specific, and it's contained in the staff report. It limits local government fees to actual and reasonable cost, and establishes safe harbor fee amounts. It enacts shot clocks of sixty days for small, small wireless facilities on existing facilities or poles, and ninety days for small wireless facilities on proposed new structures or poles. It also prohibits cities from imposing aesthetic requirements for small wireless facilities in the public right, right-of-way, which are not reasonable, no more burdensome than those applied to other types of infrastructure deployments, objective, and published in So the, the photograph, or the, the, the photograph on the slide is one of that, one of the photographs that are, or exhibits included in the city's design guidelines that was adopted by the Design Review Commission. So basically, the process is through an AUP, the current process is through an AUP process, so if, if it complies with, with the diagram on the, the left, which is the, the RU antenna, and antennas are contained within a, a shroud, that's no wider than the pole itself, and is the same color as the pole itself, so that it's a little, so that it looks a little bit more stealth. And if the wires are enclosed within the pole, and the pole is made out of aggregate or marbleite, and the utility box is underground, staff would approve it. If it's, if it doesn't comply with these guidelines, then it would go to the planning commission for approval. In the slide, I included examples of what small wireless facilities look like currently with that, that was approved and processed without design guidelines, and also to the right, the very right, right along this area where the pointer is, is a photograph of a, of, of a small wireless facility that would comply with the city's guideline. As you can see, that Um, as you can see, that without, without any guidelines, uh, these small wireless facilities are, would be very visible, um, and are not very stealth. And with the guidelines, it would, uh, if somebody was to drive around, unless you're really looking for something like this, then you, you wouldn't really notice it, or because of its stealthness, um, and because it is the same size, it is the same size as the pole, just a li, a little bit taller, and the wires, um, are internal and are hidden. So one of the, one of the items that staff is suggesting that the planning commission take a look at is aesthetics. Should the, the code amendment be drafted based on design guidelines? If so, it would be, would it be by reference, or does the planning commission, or would the planning commission would like to codify the design guidelines? Staff is recommending that if the planning commission wishes to reference design, um, to include the design guidelines in the code amendment, it would be done by reference, mainly because if it's adopted by reference, if technology changes, or if there are any changes that the commission would like, um, it can, it can just be modified, um, and it's very flexible. If it's codified, then we would have to process a code amendment in, in order to, um, in order to modify a code amendment. It would take several months to do so. Uh, so in staff's opinion, it would be, if, if the commission would like to ref, um, include the code amendment, um, the design guidelines in the code amendment, it would be adopted by reference. At the last um, planning commission meeting, when the, when the planning commission discussed the, um, the design guidelines, uh, one, one of the commissioners, Commissioner Shang, um, asked if there is a minimum separation in between poles. Staff did, did survey many different cities, and we found that the industry, the industry standard, or the standard, standard across cities is basically, um, two hundred fifty feet of separation in between poles. So if somebody would propose to construct it, um, or to install a small wireless facility, and they would require, they would be, and they're required to, um, install a new pole, it would have to, the new pole would have to be at least two hundred fifty feet away from another pole. Uh, and another thing that the commission can consider is separation from residential. Currently, for regular wireless facilities, the code requires that it's separated, but, um, it, it is at least a hundred feet away from, from a residential property. Over on, upon speaking to the city attorney, um, since, since a lot of the demand for small, small wireless facilities are around residential neighborhoods and around residential areas, if that same separation would be required, it would totally prohibit, um, them from, from installing, installing small wireless facilities in, in areas where they actually need them. So it would be against the FCC, it would be against, um, the FCC order. Um, and as far as staff recommend, the staff's recommendation is concerned, staff is recommend, is recommending that, that rather than, um, having a separation distance from residential properties, the planning commission can consider a separation distance from a residential structure that can possibly, uh, be consistent with the required front set, um, setbacks, which, um, in the staff report, staff include, um, pointed out that the required front setback is twenty-five feet. So twenty-five feet would be, twenty, between twenty or twenty-five feet would be a reasonable distance from a residential property, which in this case would prohibit, um, the installation of new poles in, on, along, adjacent to lots that are, that residential lots that are a corner lot along the street side. Uh, because typically the, these corner lots, the residences on these corner lots are closer to the street side than twenty-five or twenty feet. Um, another thing to consider is a line of sight provision. Um, one of the things, one of the things staff came up with or has thought about is prohibiting the installation of new poles that are directly, um, in line with a window or door. An example of this is a photograph, is a photograph, um, that I had put up in the projector. So basically, this pole is directly in front of this home's window. So if somebody was to look out the window, um, the first thing that they would see directly outside their window is this pole. And also it's, since, this is also an example of a residence that is, that is um, in close proximity, it's a corner lot, and it's, it's side yard, um, the side of the house is in close proximity to a pole. Um, so basically, in staff's opinion, if somebody was to, from, from street view, if somebody was to look at the house, um, the fir, one of the first things that they would see is this pole, 'cause it's right smack in the middle of the house, um, or, or in the middle of the, um, front of the house. And it also blocks a window. And staff's recommendation is also include, um, if it, it also, um, is indirectly in front of a door, 'cause it would have the same or worse effect. One of the items that staff had included in the report is the review and permitting process. Um, currently, we, we require administrative use permit application to process, um, these items, which would require, um, neighbor notification. And one of the problems with this process is that it takes ti, um, it takes time to process an administrative use permit. Um, basically, once we send out the public hearing notice, or, I'm sorry, once we send out the notification, um, which basically states that, um, this item is being proposed in this location, and you, you can request a hearing in front of the planning, you have the right to request a hearing in front of the planning commission within ten days of receiving this notice. So, um, because of the time, the, the timeframe, staff is allowed to review it in the public notification period, and if somebody requests a hearing, um, that, that would add more, that would add more time for the planning, for the public hearing notification and scheduling of the public hearing itself. Um, and base, basically, FCC, the FCC, um, order states that cities have sixty days to process an application from start to finish, meaning that once they submit an application, the city has sixty days to, to review the aesthetics. Um, and aesthetics is usually reviewed, reviewed by the planning division, and also review its safety. And safety is, is reviewed by the engineering division. So it would have to get through the, through planning and engineering within sixty days. And if there are corrections, the shot clock stops, um, until they re-submit again, which it, it doesn't start, the shot clock doesn't, I don't believe the shot clock starts over, but it's, it's stalled, and then it restarts. Um, the staff has, has presented five different options, and staff is recommending that the planning commission consider option five, which is administrative review by staff, not through an AUP process, but just, um, a review of the actual plant, um, whether it's over the counter or something that they would have to submit to, for staff to review the plans to see if it complies with the design guidelines. And if it doesn't comply to the design guidelines, then staff will automatically forward it to the planning commission. Um, with this, staff recommends that the planning commission accept the report to support the discussion regarding the initiated code amendment and to provide further direction to staff.
Let me talk for one second, then we'll, what I, what, some of you have been on the commission a while, used to this, but I, I wanna go through each question one at a time. That, that works better than, so it kinda guides the conversation. But I wanna talk for a second about administrative review versus administrative use permit. Those sound the same, but they're not the same. Our code has different processes. And administrative review is, is the simplest process we have. It's an application, I know karaoke is one of the things on there, I don't remember what else. There's not very many things that are on that list that go through administrative review.
Massage.
Oh yeah, accessory massage is another thing. So that's submitted, goes to staff. There's no notification, there's no review by planning commission. Now, there can be, we can forward it to the planning commission for review, that's possible. Uh, but it's a simple process, uh, for, for simple things. Uh, the administrative use permit, and so it can go pretty quickly. And that's important in this conversation because of the shot clock thing. Um, the, the AUP, administrative use permit, which you guys are somewhat familiar with, it requires notification, a ten-day review period. So it, it almost assuredly takes at least two weeks. Well, it's gonna take more than two weeks. It takes about three weeks from the time it's submitted to the time of the end of that ten-day review period, just, just because of weekends and things like that. And then if there's a, a hearing requested, then we've gotta schedule for planning commission, we gotta do the noticing again. So you add those numbers up, you're already over halfway through the sixty days, and we haven't, we didn't even review it. You know, we have to review it too. So, and then there's an appeal period for AUPS, and they can go, so we, we're trying to avoid, um, unnecessary time lags because of that shot clock. So that, that's one thing to talk about. Um, we are predating this on the concept that we had of the design guidelines. So if you recall, last time we approved that, design guidelines, which the concept is you have an administrative review for, for the ones that comply with design guidelines, and you have a discretionary review for ones that don't comply. What that means is administrative or ministerial means, if they meet the guidelines, we approve it. Nobody ever sees it, there's no notification. It me, we're just looking, is it this high? Is it fit in a bread box? You know, is the thing underground? Is it this size? Um, is it in this shape? If those things happen, we approve it, we're done. If it, if they don't do it that way, and, and if you recall the slide that she had, you know, there, there's several different variations of what they might propose and what they have proposed. We have some of these in our city now that are, for lack of a better discussion, they're awful looking. Um, we're trying to avoid those. We're not trying to replicate those, we're trying to avoid those. And those were approved, the, the most recent one, I think, from what I got from engineering, was seven years ago. That's the last one we approved. We, we're not approving these things over and over. Those were approved before, and they were approved probably going back into the early two thousands. Um, so we're trying to avoid those. But if they, if they propose the one on the right, then we approve that administratively, and then we're done. So that, and you know, people, applicants love that kinda thing because they, they want to know if they submit some, it's gonna be approved quickly. So that's a real incentive for them to approve, to propose the one on the right, not one of the other ones, 'cause they know they're gonna, it's gonna take them time. Um, so those are the things I wanna talk about. Now, go, go back to the aesthetics, and we'll just, I think I caught Dawn's cold. Um, the first one is, should the, should the code amendment be designed based on the design guideline? That's the first question. Are you comfortable with that concept? I'm not talking about every single situation or every single design guideline, but are you comfortable with that, with that, that concept of administrative review, discretionary review, and providing guidelines that we would follow?
Anybody? Commissioner Hockes?
Yeah, I'm, I'm very, um, yeah, I'm very comfortable with the concept, and, and certainly understand the objective of having a, a process that's gonna, um, smooth, um, you know, meeting shot clock timeline for reviews. Um, I actually have a question about the design guidelines themselves, if, if there's still, or if, that should have, that has the same, that is contributory to the same objective of shortening, uh, you know, the shot clock, uh, period and, and getting through, you know, quicker reviews. Um, are there, are there potentially other, um, design guideline considerations that could come up later that could, uh, if we discover that, you know, there, there's, you know, issues with the design guideline we, that gets, that's adopted now, and technology changes, and, you know, it has to be adapted, um, that we might have to, uh, deal with then, because, um, you know, what happens in that scenario?
Right.
When they start throwing stuff at you that, with new technology changes that, that sort of blow up what we've proven in the zygomatics?
Understood. And that's a very good question. In this, in this category of things, they, there's constant change with the technology. Um, and so you kinda jumped from question one to question two.
Yeah, I know.
Which is fair. They're kind of interrelated. The first one is, are you, with the concept? The second one is, um, should it be in the code or not in the code? And so what, what, my, my response to yours, would, your question would be, it's probably best if it's not in the code.
Oh, no, I agree that with, that it's not in the code. Yeah, definitely.
We can move those changes.
Yeah.
'Cause if it's in the, if it's in the code, we've gotta go through this process.
Process again, yeah.
If it's, if it's a guideline that, that the planning commission adopts, it comes to planning commission once, you can make that change that night, and we're ready to go the next day. Um, so I think that's, that's how I would answer that question.
Okay, great.
So that's the way we roll with changes.
'Cause I have, like, I have like an actual example of something that to consider, uh, when it came to the question of lines, line of sight. And, um, and this actually comes through, you know, from professional experience.
Right.
From my work, uh, where, you know, in the traffic engineering world, where, you know, you're doing signposting for, you know, traffic signs. And, you know, one of the practices that, you know, most, a lot of, you know, engineers will do is they'll, they'll find the right place for it, you know, distance-wise relative to the issue they're addressing. And then at the same time, uh, you know, uh, find an appropriate place to put it, uh, that it wouldn't be objectionable to say a neighboring, to adjacent residents. And so uh, then the best place to do that would be on, on a property line. So I was wondering if the design guideline might, you know, address that as a possibility of, for placement of a pole where, where feasible and where, where it works in terms of the spacing, uh, you know, where at all possible, use that, that, that location for placement on a property line. 'Cause now you don't have, you know, either property on either side, um, you know, one more adversely affected by the presence of the pole than, than the other.
And I, I think there's some merit to, to working that idea. I, I'm thinking maybe that it's maybe, just on the property line, maybe it's within fifteen feet of the property line. That gives them twenty or thirty feet to work with, 'cause lots of times, there's a pole there, and they're just replacing the pole.
Hmm.
So I think we need to give them a little wiggle room, but that is definitely something we can, we can look into. Uh, I, I, I would much prefer to have a standard like that than, than things like, uh, I forget how this one's worded, but, oh, uh, should not be within the horizontal field of vision of residential living areas. I, I don't even know what that means.
Yeah, that's really, really vague.
That's a weird criteria. So I, I, I think we can work with that. I, we might wanna hear from others, but I think that, that's a good, good thought.
Okay.
Chair, can I, um, have a few minutes to go through the slides before we come through this whole thing?
Sure.
Basically, people.
Put your, your mic.
Oh.
I'd like to go, uh, take a few minutes to go through some of the slides that I prepped because it's just visual. Um, some of them is within the city, some of them is not within the city, before the state passed a code. Um, you know, the looks of it, and throughout California, as they show this. And also, I wanted to say that this particular code and with the Supreme Court, or the court that stated that aesthetic, you know, as a city, we can, you know, come up with an aesthetic saying that if it looks really bad for our neighborhood, then we need to be able and can put it in the code. So on one side, the court said that, yes, we can do this. On the other side, we're saying that the federal government is saying that, okay, we only have sixty days and approve it, we would approve it. So after a while, how many of these things is gonna be in our neighborhood? So I presented some slide, and, oh, give me one sec, one, two, three, four, four? So if you can pass this along. And since we only have one.
We have a second.
Uh huh. And then I also have it on the slide as well. So based, um, some of the code, where the new code, the code basically state that these are little boxes, it can't be as big, if you look up there, if I point it right over there. So one, two, three, three boxes. So it can be equally as big or bigger as the size of a fridge. So right now, if we wanna codify it, like Jeff was saying earlier, how many should we put in front of our front yard? And these are something that we need to really be specific, because the code said we only have sixty days. And then if we make it so simple to approve it, as resident, all four of us can have some of these. some of these items on it, and this is not as big. Now, the bigger one is... Can be as big as a fridge. I'm five foot tall. I'm five foot tall. So fridge is a lot taller than I am, a little bit, most of them. So that's one of the picture. Go ahead. Now, this is in front of someone's house. So look at the person right there and on top of it. So if we were to qualify, look at how big this thing is. And then this is the person right here. So we also have to take that into consideration, and how do we codify it so that it can meet the shot clock? Because we're not going to see it. It's not going to come to us, and we're not going to review this. When we're not sitting here, one of these things might be in our front yard, if not in our front door, in this case. Go ahead. So look at this one right here. This is the standard one regarding the state or the code that stated that it's standard. Look at this van right here, in the van right here. So one, two, how many can you put in one location? That's something that we need to look at. Go ahead. And then on the telephone pole. See how this is telephone pole? All these little boxes is all over the places, and all these little equipment boxes. Go ahead. And on the telephone pole, this is not in our city right now. However, it's going to come, and it comes with this, and this is three feet, and according to what they said, aesthetic. You have to remember, the court just approved it in April 4, 2019, saying that the city can, you know, come up with a code to saying, hey, aesthetic will work. If you don't like a certain look, if you don't like this look, we can say, no, we don't want it like this. In our front windows, home, or what have you. Go ahead. This is another one. Do you see how right here? The telephone was right here, but this one right here is about five feet or six feet out, sticking out, and then with this antenna coming down. Go ahead. And all that wire sticking out like that. So this can be in someone's bedroom. If the telephone pole is in the backyard, it can be in someone's backyard. Look at this one right here, on the right-hand side, all these huge boxes on top of it. You think it's very uncommon. We're never going to see it, right? But look at this guy right here with all these on top of it. This is normal, and this is approvable. So that we... If we were to codify it and have the staff to review this, we need to really look into and take into consideration that this doesn't happen if this is what we want or we don't want this. Go ahead. Look at how these boxes... This is the standard size. It's not as even... It's not as big. Now, the three-foot-long tall, that's what we are allowing. Go ahead. This is an... Okay. This one right here, we thought we're never going to see this. This is off on Grand. This telephone pole right here, and this one right here is off on Grant and Cameron. So this is a real thing. We thought we're not going to have it. Wait until it comes, okay? And then it comes, it's going to be more. Right now, it's 100 foot from residence. Do we want to see this? And this is just one of them next to the next telephone pole, so there are two of them. Look at how this one is. There are two on this telephone pole, one, and then the cell towers one. And for some reason, this cell tower is always leaning. I drove by it almost every single day, and I was always curious, why is it leaning? Okay, go ahead. I was curious. Look at the bottom as an engineer. Look at what happened to this pole, the one that's leaning. And look, they're using a two... A four-by-four just to plug it in here and to have it holding it up. So I never understand why it's... I actually stopped by to just take a look at, why is this pole leaning? Look at how... First of all, there are two pole, and second of all, it's almost snapping. It's almost like a toothpick, because they put too many stuff on top of it. Go ahead. And this is off on Grant and Cameron. This is West Corina. Go ahead. Now, this one is like two pole away, or a pole the next door. I did it really quickly today, so I don't really know. So from this angle right here, it looks pretty straight. There are four, one, two, three, four antenna, and this is not even three foot. Three foot is what we're saying that it's minimum that they can have. This is less than three foot right here. Go ahead. At this angle, you see how it is? I'm taking it from the bottom. It's leaning onto the bigger one. Why is that? And then there's one, two, three, four. Go ahead. Look at the pulse of it. Look at the pulse of this thing. And to think that I'm driving by this every single day, there are two pole held up a screw with a four-by-four. Go ahead. Now, this one is in front of someone's house. Look at the sign right here. This is straight. Look at this one right here. It's also on Cameron. Actually, on Cortez. I believe it's Cameron Cortez and Grant. And the pole is leaning this way. And look at this one. It's straight right here. So it is leaning. It hasn't snapped yet. But just to think that the other one, it's held up by a screw. Go ahead. A four-by-four. Now, some of aesthetic, this is a cell tower. Some of the aesthetic, look, it was approved. It's nice and pretty right now. You know, it barely have any leaves on, and this is where... You should be familiar with this place right here. It's on Harlem Back on the 10 freeway. And this is what we approved, but today, this is not what we've got. Go ahead. Same thing as this. This is off on Hacienda, and I forgot where it was. Hacienda and Wine, somewhere over there. And look, close to by the Hong Kong Market, I believe. And look at someone's houses right here, but this is a tower. However, look at how all the coverage that it was supposed to be there, but right here, you can see it clearly. It's very visible. It's not even covered up. The color looks very different as well. Go ahead. And this is the West Corina. Look at what was approved. It was approved, looking like this, nice and cute and all. And look at what it is today. This is a real, real, you know, tower. Aesthetically, it's going to look like that. Go ahead. After a few years. This one right here is a small cell, because sometime, all the other stuff that you saw earlier, majority of them are small cells, sticking on telephone pole, and that's a real thing. You are welcome to drive by off on Hillside and Grant. All the two telephone pole, the one that looked like it snapped. This one, I believe, is Cameron and Harlem Back, and this is a small one like this. Go ahead. This one right here, you see how this one right here? If you don't say anything, if you don't qualify... Codify in terms of how we want aesthetically, we're going to get something like this. However, if you were... If we were to set it up properly, we are getting something like this. Much slender, cuter, and it's much pleasant, and we have to upgrade it. You know, update it. The facility people has updated as well. Go ahead. So this graph right here, which is by... This one, we're following this code. I'm sorry. Here we go. One. We can't read it, but I'm going to send it to you. We're following the Costa Mesa code right now.
No.
Oh, no.
Let me be clear.
Okay, we're not. We're not, okay.
Yeah, we're not following.
This is Costa Mesa code that we're just looking at, because...
Let me... Before you... You can go ahead and talk, but before... On the last page of the staff report is our guidelines.
Gotcha, okay. So basically, our guideline, we need to really work on this, because what we're getting and what our guideline is and what they have out there, it's not really the same. If we want to... If they want to quick, quick, quick approve, we also need to come up with something that is... That will work for us for the future and for all the resident in West Corina. Because what we're seeing right now, you think that it may not happen. It is just right around the corner. And to think that I'm driving by it every day, that thing can fall off on top of anyone. Anyone who's go to the Mount Sac School, to the Cal Poly School, the resident that live around here, it's held up by a four-by-four.
I just drove by it today.
You just drove by it today. But the question comes in is that I am... Basically, if we were to design something, we have to understand what it is that they want, why they want it so quickly. And as a court... The court actually gave us that aesthetic as a city, we can actually dictate how that pole should look and how we want all these poles to look in the future. Because every... Because some city, like, for example, the one that I just passed out, this is Costa Mesa code, and it's say 500 feet away from residential zone. Ours is a little bit different. So we should look at what other people are doing, and we can come up with it. Because currently, the sitting and resident, it's not allowed basically in residential zones 500 feet. So if we really want to codify it, we really need to look into it.
100 feet.
West Corina is 100 feet. However, other city is setting up at 500 feet or so. So we should really study this and, you know, take into consideration... That's why I want to show you guys that what it potentially can look like and what the real code said, it's not as cutesy as what we think it is. So that's what I want to see, so we can continue talking about the plan.
And just to be clear, nothing that was showed on that would meet our guidelines, except for the very last one? So nothing you showed would comply with the guidelines that were put in place by this planning commission last meeting?
Correct. What I'm saying is that the code... The current code actually allows something like this as a small cell. But we're saying that we're coming up with new code, showing all the commissioners, and as a discussion, so we don't have these type of code.
Right.
Or these type of...
That is correct.
And then we can come up with something that will work for us in the future, and how many we want to see it? And how many... How many pole do we want in one location? One pole only? Two pole, like what we had off on Grant and Hillside? Or three, four pole? I don't know. But that's something that we don't really have. We're working on it right now. That's what we're having a discussion, so we can work on.
That's what we're working on, exactly. Yeah.
I have a question. Commissioner Hockes, yes?
Yeah, I guess my question is, I saw something on the presentation slide earlier about, I mean, first, you know, there was the resolution of the lawsuit between City and County of San Francisco and... Was it AT&amp;T? Or I forget, or T-Mobile? And then another... And another, was it also a court decision that said that... Or it was another FCC guideline that said that we couldn't regulate aesthetics if they were... If the regulation was unreasonable? And I was kind of... And I was wondering, how do we interpret what would be unreasonable? And, you know, and because as much as we have this guideline, I'm concerned that, you know, you know, one of the telecom companies is just going to just waive this, you know, this guideline and say, you know, you're, you know, for what we want need to do, it's, you know, and compared to what you're asking us how to deal with it aesthetically, that's not reasonable.
Right. And that, you know, that's the rub on anything that we have that is subjective. Architectural design, you know, there's lots of things that fit into that. We will have it, our attorney here, next time we talk about this, because that's why we hire them. Because generally, what you want to write guidelines that are as close to the edge but not right at the edge, right? You don't want to be the guy who's right at the edge that everybody's going, well, we're going to sue that guy, because he's right at the edge. You want to be back from there. Because really, I think we all agree, the last thing we want to do is be in a lawsuit. We're never going to win in a lawsuit. I don't mean... Because it's going to cost us money. That's what I mean. There's always going to be a cost to us, and it's probably... We're probably never going to be able to recoup that cost. Even if we win, we're never going to recoup that cost. If we lose, then we're really in bad shape, because we've lost everything.
Well, there are also court case, too, also on our side regarding the FCC. Palace Verdi's versus... I forgot what the cell tower...
Well, aesthetics, you're right. Aesthetics is pretty clear.
So aesthetic is pretty clear, that we can determine what it looks like.
And that's what the guidelines are all about, yeah.
Correct.
And so we... That's true, but some of the things about reasonable... So things that might not be reasonable is setting a 500-foot limit between a pole... A light pole and a residential use. Something that might not be reasonable is requiring them to be 500 feet apart from each other. I've got that both from the... Both of those statements from the city attorney's office, and that doesn't mean we can't have a separation. I think now, if you keep in mind that one of the things that's going on in that industry is they are trying to figure out how to get these cells in residential areas. That's what they're trying to do. So they're not going to be happy with writing rules that don't allow them in residential areas.
But we're also not going to be happy if they're putting all these stuff in front of our face. We're the one that's stuck with seeing this every day.
Well, true, but...
So that's why we have to come up, and there are some court cases that we can actually work with.
I don't mean to debate that. And so we can debate that, or you can have that discussion with the city attorney. I'm not prepared. I'm unarmed on that, but I don't want to get into court case discussion.
Correct.
I'm just want to... I want to point out, there's certain things that they're looking for. That is what they're looking for. So that, when we're talking about reasonable, keep in mind, that's what they're looking for, to be reasonable. Something that fits into the area that they need to provide the coverage. They're not doing this because they want to be mean to us. They're doing it because they want to provide the coverage to their customers.
Well, we're also, at the same time, we don't want to be outrageous to, you know, Jeff, but at the same time, we also have to understand what is our rights. For example, aesthetic. Aesthetic is in the eye of the beholder. Is five-feet box pleasant to our eyes? Or is it not? Correct?
So my thought...
So that's something that we were thinking about.
Let's go through each one of the questions. That's why we do the questions, so that helps us get direction. Because otherwise, we just have a free-flowing discussion, we end up not having any answer and not any direction.
Yeah, let's get focused.
And I think we all know by this discussion that this is something we don't want to be talking about for months and months. Because while we do that, we don't have standards that we can apply that might be considered reasonable. Because what we did with the guidelines, and you weren't here the last time, but we basically went to the code and said, here's what the code says we can do. We didn't modify... We can't modify the code. Only you guys in the council can modify the code. So I don't think the guidelines we have in place right now are very good in the sense of where we need to be to be reasonable. So we want to move it along, but I am in total agreement with Commissioner Hing, that we want to come up with something that, that protects the residents aesthetically, at the same time as it allows these guys to move quickly if they submit what we think is appropriate. So, back to our discussion, so go back to the aesthetic. So the code amendment, we talked about, so the code amendment designed, on the design guidelines, I think we got affirmation on that. Would it be in the code? I think I heard that we're probably best to not have it in the code, to have standards in the code, but have the guidelines separate and approved separately. And if we do that, that way, that means what we'll do is we'll get the code approved, then we'll come back to you right after that with the guy, I mean, right after that, hopefully the next meeting, with the guidelines. And that way, we can tweak them, we can still, the code won't specifically say everything in there, we can still massage that a little bit as we go. So that, that's.
Well, at any time.
At any time, we can massage them, that's correct. All right, so then, the next one is, is 250 feet of separation between poles acceptable? I want to make sure that everyone's clear, that when we're talking about these putting on poles, they can only put one on a pole. With our guidelines now, and with, with the guidelines we were sort of mimicking, which is, as Commissioner Hing pointed out, Costa Mesa, that was only, they're only allowing one on a pole. So you wouldn't have three or four on a pole, there's only one on each light pole, and if we put the 250 foot in, there would only be one every 250 feet. You couldn't have one between that, so you wouldn't end up with those circumstances. And, yeah, and I have, I have to, I have to confess, I'm from the Midwest, I recognize, many of those pictures you had were from the Midwest, because that on-the-border restaurant.
Those are not the Midwest, the later portion is actually.
Oh, no, no, not the, the first ones.
The latter portion is in California, majority of them are San Francisco.
Okay, the ones at the beginning, I'm pretty sure were the Midwest, because I could tell by the foliage, but anyway, they don't have standards hardly at all there.
No, it's not the Midwest, it's in California, this code where it first came out.
Even ones with all the four underneath and the on-the-border restaurant. Okay, anyway, the Midwest has really, I can, I could give you pictures that would make your toes cringe on, on stuff that's out there, but, so.
Jeff, by the way, I was from the Midwest, so I, yes.
You've seen them too. Is 200 foot, 250 foot separation, is that acceptable?
I like to make it more conservative and possible, like for example, with Costa Mesa that's about 100.
No, 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 that's a different question, I'm sorry, Commissioner Hing. This is 250 feet separation between poles.
I think within between pole, maybe between two pole, because some pole are closer than others, is that correct?
Well, yes, but if we put that standard in, they'd have, it doesn't matter where the pole is, they'd still have to be 250 feet apart. If they needed to move a pole, put a new pole in, or go to the next pole, they'd have to do that.
Can we put midpoint and 250 feet versus what if 250 feet would be next to the other pole?
250 feet.
Or? We can put 250 feet or mid.
Well, I think maybe you should have that discussion, I, I'm not sure I'm following, but that, that's, that would be the question. We would be okay with a 250, I believe our city attorney would be too. We could go higher or lower, it's a radius around the pole, Commissioner Hing, if you understand what I mean. It's not, it's not 250 feet in one direction, it's 250 feet in a circle around it. So nowhere could it be any closer than 250 feet, but let me be quiet for a minute unless you guys talk.
I'm fine with 250 feet.
I'm fine with 250 feet too.
Okay, okay. And then, this is the question I think you were getting at, how much separate, how much of a separation from the residential structure is acceptable? Now, this may get touchy when we get to the legal part, and that's why you see these odd things about line of sight. 20 to 25 feet is what, is what has been suggested by our city attorney, which is basically the width of a front yard setback. But you know, part of that discussion.
I like to follow what Costa Mesa has, I mean, they're very conservative, 500 feet or so.
So let me, so you understand, let me read what Costa Mesa's said. I don't have their code, that's what I, no, you have their guidelines, you don't. So the guidelines say, this is, this is their, you need to read them very carefully, citing, locate 500 feet away from residential zones when feasible. A facility within 500 feet of a residential zone should not be within the horizontal field of vision of residential living area. So it doesn't say they have to be 500 feet away, it says.
I think that's the one that you saw that's a little bit different.
Is this Costa Mesa?
Yeah.
It's the one I read, all right.
Jeff, this is one of them. This is.
Well, that's interesting, we got two different ones. Okay, so this one says, I don't know which one's right, this one says, preferred location in a non-residential, in non-residential neighborhoods, 500 feet. So, and one says when feasible, one says preferred. Neither one of them say required. So.
So should we put required?
Well, I guess what I'm getting at is.
Is what conservative, illegal.
Well, it would be, it probably would be illegal.
Well, it's not illegal yet, if we're doing it as a threat.
Well, first of all, keep in mind, let's, let's go through the whole thing. Ours is 100 feet for other types, so why would we have a larger distance for things that are supposed to be closer to residential? That's not reasonable. I think we have a reasonable question. Now, the question is out there, should we do 100 feet like we do other, everything else in this city? That's a question I think we could discuss, but I think the city attorney's probably gonna say, it's, they're probably not reasonable, but if you want us to go that route, we can.
But also, does this, because we can announce and change that as well? Clothes, clothes, it could be wrong as well.
We could, we would make all kinds of non-conforming situations, and that wasn't what was initiated by the council when this was initiated.
What is reasonable?
That, so I think, yeah, you need to turn your mic on, Glenn, but that's a question, well, it's for the listening, it's for the listening audience, because people do watch, including staff sometimes.
Okay, let me, what is reasonable, Jeff?
Thank you, and I wish I knew the answer to that, Commissioner Kennedy. I think, right now, I think you have to come up with what you think makes sense and tell us, and we'll go back and work with the city attorney and come back, probably with another study session. I think I want to have them here to provide their understanding of reasonable based on court cases and precedent. So if you want us to look at 100 feet.
But Jeff, can I say something though? Our code currently set 100 feet for a cell tower. This one right here is a small cell that can spread all over the city. This is a small cell facility.
But they have, but we just, I'm not, sure I'm following.
So the big giant cell tower in our current code, it has to be half a mile away, which is 2,640 feet away from each one, and then it has also to be 100 feet from residential area. That's a giant one. So we don't have that many, so every half a mile, which is 2,600 plus feet, we can have one of those giant one in our existing code. But this particular one is a very small cell facility that we can have every 100 feet, we can possibly have one of them, so I.
We just said 250, so let's keep the discussion.
250, for telephone pole, correct. So I think 500 feet from resident is reasonable, considering that the giant one is 2,600 feet from each one of them.
You know, I'm gonna follow what you guys say, so I'm not meaning to debate, but.
Yeah, I guess there's something I'm not getting about that, in suggesting 500 feet from residential, because some of these small, small cell sites, if, they're gonna, we're gonna expect that they're gonna go into residential neighborhoods, and that's what they want to do, they want to get them in there, and, and I don't know how we're gonna, they could possibly be placed in a manner that's gonna have them that far away from residential structures. I mean, are you, I'm, maybe I'm not understanding you, maybe I'm missing something. Are you talking about 500 feet from a residential structure?
Correct.
I'm not sure how that would be possible if some of these small cells are, you know, ultimately intended to get into residential neighborhoods, where are they gonna, where could they be placed where they could meet that distance, 500 feet from residential structures?
Well, this is why we're making the hard decisions, because, just because the state said that this is what we want, we also, as a resident, can go by this, the court case, that basically an aesthetic area, for aesthetic reasons, in residential area, we don't need to have these things there as well, due to aesthetic reason. Now, aesthetic is in the eye beholder. That mean, in your eyes, in my eyes, is it reasonable to go around our neighborhood? And if it's not, that is, that is what we need to come up with. It is not based on what the code said, because the code, and the court has stated that aesthetic and the city can come up with some type of aesthetic reasonable.
Reasonable is the key word.
Reasonable, correct. So if we don't think, you know, 500 feet, we like to see one of these every 500 feet, then off we go.
If I may say, I think we should really continue this when we have the city attorney here, because we're getting into a lot of minutia.
Yeah.
Really getting into the weeds. We've talked several times about court cases and what courts have said, and I, I know Jeff, I don't have the answers, and Jeff is not a city attorney. I think we need to hold this over, we're definitely not gonna sell anything tonight.
I like that idea.
I think we need to have this, I thought the city attorney was gonna be here tonight, frankly, but I guess, you know, there was a ballgame or something, but, just kidding, folks. I think we need to hold this over until we have the city attorney here.
What I might suggest, if you don't mind, is letting, let's skip that one, we can come, but maybe cover, see if we can cover some of the others, because I think if we can get as much sort of accomplished as possible, that would be helpful.
Okay.
And probably shorten that next discussion some.
Okay.
So we can, we'll hold in abeyance that, the distance separation, and then, you know what, I'll probably recommend, the next one is a line of sight, and I think that, I think Commissioner Hockes came up with one that I think I'd like to work, work through with the, yeah, explore is a good word, with the city attorney's office, which is trying to put it near or on property lines. Because I think that, that would be a good place where you don't, the visibility is a lot less from interior of a house if you're near a property line, whether it's a front yard or side yard, it doesn't really matter. So we will explore that with them. And then, what?
Can we also, the pass, the handout that I, the handout that I passed out, at least, you know, explore that, and look at it also for the next meetings, to see if they're pretty conservative, maybe we can look at it and see if that, use, potentially, potentially use it as a guideline as well.
That's the guidelines, we're focused on the code right now. The code has to be adopted, then we do the guidelines. So we have guidelines in place, and, and this is our guidelines, so if you wanted to compare what they did with what we did, we, we did start with that, so our guidelines are very similar to that. But our guidelines have to comply with our code. So, you see what I'm saying? Our guidelines have to comply with our code, we can't just make up guidelines because somebody else did it. It has to comply with our code, so we have to modify the code and then do new set of guidelines. So one informs the other.
But we rushed through this code last time, is that correct?
No, we didn't do a code, we did the guidelines.
We did the guideline, okay.
We're doing the code now, we're certainly not rushing through.
We're doing the code right now, correct, so we're, okay, because we did the guideline, we rushed through the guideline last time.
We did rush through the guidelines.
So this time, we're going through the code and we can use some, okay.
Yes, and then when we're done, we can go back to the guy, we will be able to adopt the guideline. I mean, we need to, we need to design the code so that the guidelines we want are available, right? But you don't, we don't want to do the guidelines first, because then it throws off the discussion, we have to do the code first.
So that's why it's important that I let everyone see what it looks like potentially, because this code is, you know, a lot of time, we may not think it will impact us, but this will impact everyone once they implement it.
Oh, yes, it will impact us.
And this is for the futures to come, and this is what we will be looking.
The only other thing I said, it's not a state law, it's a federal law, so this isn't, the court case was a federal court case, I think.
The Supreme Court.
That's a good thing, it's a federal, okay.
Okay, so then the other one is the process, and I know this is confusing, but I would like to at least have a little bit of discussion on this, and I don't want to go through all the alternatives unless you guys want us to, but what we're recommending is, we wanted to flush out alternatives for our own sake as well as yours, what we're recommending is, when we set up this, the code and the guidelines, that we set it up so that there's an administrative review by staff, and if it's in compliance with the guidelines, staff approves it, and that's that one with the little thing on top, right? We've seen two pictures, one that Commissioner Hing showed, and one that was in Joanne's presentation, then we would approve that at staff level. And they'd have to be smaller than the size that, that we put that in the code. And then if they don't, then we would forward that to the planning commission, same review process, still the administrative review, we just forward it to the planning commission. So are you comfortable with setting up this system in that, with that review process?
But can't we just say it's not permitted?
Is it possible for our code to say it's not permitted?
No. First of all, as, as we talked about, you have to have a process and it has to be reasonable. You can't just say it's not permitted, you can only not.
No, but we have a guideline, the guideline is, is what it is that we wanted, anything else that they wanted?
Well, but if it comes to you, I, I believe administrative review is discretionary, so I, I understand what you're saying now. If it comes to you, you're not under any requirement to approve it.
Gotcha.
You, you may decide, just like you've been in subcommittee, you know, sometimes we have guidelines, sometimes we say, no, follow the guidelines, other times we say, oh, well, you know, it's okay in this case not to follow the guidelines. That's why guidelines are good, because you have flexibility to look at it on a case-by-case basis. So you could do the same thing, it could come to you and you could say, well, in this case, you know, it, it's okay because, I don't know, it's hidden by a tree, or maybe it's across the street from a church, or it's in front of a church, and, you know, it's not a big issue, but in the next case, it's right in front of a house, you say, no, 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 if you're gonna do this, you've gotta follow our guidelines. So I believe that's how it would be set up. Everybody comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, all right, so that, I think that's the last one, right?
That's it.
Okay, so that gives us some direction, and I appreciate, this is gonna be a lot, a lot more discussion, I think, as we go forward. And, and one other thing to add is that, because of the timeframes that we're talking about here, every city's doing the same thing. So if you look at when this was, maybe that's why there's two different ones of these, because maybe by the time they reviewed it and adopted it, that they had changed it, because I know that a nearby city adopted it two weeks before we did. So everybody, there's not, one, you can go and say, what have you been doing? Because nobody's been doing this, because all this stuff just came down the pike. And also, the wireless companies have just now started to turn to these things, they weren't proposing very many of them before, and now they're gonna, it seems like they're gonna propose a lot, so, and we know, because we've gotten the submittal, was it five?
Yes, we approved, when we approved the guidelines, two days after we approved the guidelines, Crown Castle submitted five applications to engineering division, where, and we informed the engineering division that they would have to, let them know that they would have to submit to planning so that we can enforce our guidelines, which was adopted ahead of time, prior to them submitting.
So we did a good thing by getting those guidelines adopted, because two days later, we needed them. If we didn't have them, we wouldn't had any, we wouldn't had anything to, we would have probably had to approve them.
And also, for the record, I, that, that, those five applications were submitted by Crown Castle, and I spoke to Crown Castle and I provided them our guidelines, they didn't, they, they thought our guidelines were reasonable, they did not have any problems with our guidelines, except for the fact that it's in our guidelines, we require 100 feet from residential, because that would prevent them from locating in residential areas.
So that's what we got from the one application we've gotten so far, so.
And, the thing about locating in residential areas is, you know, it's a, you know, it's a two-edged sword there in terms of, you know, how that might, you know, the risk of how that might look once it, if it were to go into residential areas, and, you know, how the, even, you know, with the guidelines, and with our ability to say yes or no, if it's something that, is something we don't like, balance with the, you know, the, you know, the service that's provided and what people in this, you know, in our city, what they might want from this service, you know, and, and, you know, and if they're wondering, well, why am I not getting, you know, the, the service that's gonna come with this new wave of technology with 5G and everything, why is it, you know, why is it not available to me closer to, you know, where I live? And, you know, if we have, if we have this kind of, you know, restriction on, you know, distance to resident, residential structures, I think that's something we gotta weigh as to, you know, what is it that people want, you know?
Yeah, and, and, and I think, as we close here, I don't think I need anything else from, from the commission, but as we close out, the goal should be to think, what do we want it to look like? And, and the other things can be part of it, but the real goal should be, what do we want it to look like? And let's write it so we get what we want it to look like, and not be too awful concerned about, you know, if it's gonna go into this neighborhood or that neighborhood, but what is it gonna look like?
Yeah, we want it to look good no matter where it is, I would think.
I have one question.
Okay.
How, how much can we actually put underground?
Well.
I, I mean, I mean, how, you know, they use vaults and stuff, so, you know, like Sheena was saying, that if, if you look at this, it's, it's pretty damn big, and I, I'm just wondering, how much of that can actually go underground?
It can be go underground, however, they don't want the cost, and they don't want the digging.
Yeah, but you know, at some point, I, I don't know about you, but if, if I have a pole in front of my house, and all of a sudden I have an eight-foot box, I'm not gonna be happy, and I don't think any other resident would be happy.
Well, one of them is not that bad, however, if you have nine, 10 of them, can that be a problem?
That's why I want to make sure you're clear, you can't, you can only have one on a pole. You're assuming.
What Glenn, Commissioner Kennedy was saying, that one is more than enough, that he didn't want it, basically.
Well, I agree that, yeah, I just want to make sure you're clear, that there can't be nine or 10 of them. Let, let me, so if you look at this, what it says is, it, to be, the recommended approval, what we would set up to be easily approved is when it's underground. If it's above ground, it would come to the planning commission, that's how we'd have it set up.
Okay, first of all, let me just really quickly thank you, Commissioner Hing, for the, that was a lot of effort, and very adjudicational, and actually pretty frightening.
So.
So nobody's gonna sleep good.
So, yeah, I will, I will, that's gonna be on the tour, that's, that's pretty scary, I don't think any of us want to see that, and I think that as we go forward, we'll make sure that we never see it again. Okay.
Yeah, one other thing on that, just to clear up some of the, the thing.
I was this close.
The, yeah, I'm sorry, because there's things that come up, I just want to make sure you, you understand that, when we, let's see, the poles have to be marbleite, right? Put it on there. Yeah, you can't, the new guidelines that were just adopted, you can't put it on a wood pole, it has to be on a marbleite pole, and it has to be, the, the antenna has to be above the light standard. So I, I know that there's a lot of horror stories out there, and we can probably find them all over the place, I just want you to understand, those, none of those things that were shown, except for the very last slide, the one on the left, would be allowed with our guidelines, so.
Some residential area do not have light poles in their neighborhood.
Then they have to turn on their microphone.
Oh.
Well.
I'm just curious, because some neighborhood has all the utilities underground and they don't have light poles.
Well, you're thinking of telephone poles, not light poles. I think, I think every neighborhood in West Covina has light poles.
West Covina does.
Most of them are owned by Edison.
Light poles?
Light poles, yeah, that's street lights. So almost every, I believe every street in West Covina has street lights on it.
County does it, but West Covina doesn't.
And there might be private streets that don't, but they're not gonna, they can't put them on private streets, because they'd have to get approval of the private street owner, so.
Okay, I'm ready to move on. I don't know about anybody else, but, yeah, we're moving on. Okay, the next item is another study session, item number four, this one regarding the design review subcommittee guidelines, particularly pertaining to two-story additions. Mr. Anderson, I believe this is your report.
This would be mine. Now, I would give you the opportunity, if you want to, to punt this to a future meeting if you'd like.
I would love to punt this.
Okay, because there's nothing, there's nothing, this is, this is something that the planning commission wanted to review, but there's no timeline here.
Consider it hereby punted.
Okay.
All right. All right. Now, the audience is thrilled also.
[laughing]
Like Mrs. Miller, the famous audience. We have Mr. Kaufman, the famous audience. All right, so now that brings us to the rotation of officers, and Mr. Anderson, would you care to elaborate on this?
Yes, I will cover that quickly. You know, the, in the code, it says that the planning commission shall rotate officers every, the first meeting in every, every May, so that's why we're doing this. We have a rotation that's been set up based on how the chronology of people, last time they served, or how long they've been on the commission, and we've given you that rotation.